Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 19, 2019. Begin the special order calendar, item number 1, 6713A, 945 Zarega Avenue, the Bronx. This is the Building Department's.
Yeah, this is the Building Department's application.
Sorry, I should have made that distinction. I apologize.
Andrew Wallace, representing New York City Department of Buildings. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I attended yesterday's review session. Did not appear that there were any questions for the department regarding the department's application for rehearing, but I'm happy to answer any through our now.
Well, there were questions, there's a task. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is a rehearing, I'm sorry. No, it's true, there were no questions.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further, anything else? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from the...
Yeah.
Andrew, you want to come and sign, please?
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioners. Ariel Holzer for OTR Media Group and OTR 945 Zarega LLC. I also attended the review session yesterday, and I believe I understand the BSA's position on this matter. If the BSA would just give me a moment just to, I think, restate and clarify the BSA's position and the DOB's position, and then move forward, just one minute.
You really need to state someone else's position?
Well, I want to just be clarified, I just want everything to be clearly stated on the record, so we understand where everyone stands, there's no confusion.
Well, we're going to have a resolution that writes that...
I would also say, to the extent we disagree with whatever your characterization is of these...
I understand, I'm not changing any opinions. I don't believe I'm going to change any opinions up here. It appeared from the review session yesterday that the board's opinion is that the fact that the DOB was unaware at the time of the original hearing of the DOT evidence is acceptable as not available, or the same as when the statute says, or fits the meaning of what the statute says is not available at the time of the original hearing.
I just want to interrupt here, because when we articulate, we've talked about this a lot, and when we talk about it in the resolution, we articulate exactly, we summarize what's been going on for, in the last hearing, what we said, in the review session, what we said, in our review of the papers. I'm actually concerned, because this is going to be reviewed by the court, that a characterization that summarizes it in a simple statement will ultimately be viewed by the court as a different characterization than what we said. I'm uncomfortable...
So, I will not, I will not state the BSA's opinion.
I want to agree, I wouldn't be comfortable being limited to only what's being said, either.
Right.
Okay, I will not, I will not...
I will prefer that you do the characterization.
I will not state the BSA's opinion.
Why don't you, why don't you...
I'm just going to say my position.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, very clear, very briefly, because I understand I'm not changing any views, and I believe that the BSA has reached its conclusion on this, that was very clear from the session. The statute says, "The board will not grant the request to rehear a case which was denied, dismissed, or withdrawn with prejudice unless substantial new evidence is submitted that was not available at the time of the initial hearing." The Douglasston case, which was brought down, does mention, I think, as the board pointed out, that the evidence that was being submitted as new evidence was of limited probative value, but it also did state that it was available at the time of the initial hearing as it was part of the public record. I see these two items as severable, that both things apply, they are, it's not a value judgment of, "This is great evidence, so it doesn't matter that it wasn't new," as opposed to, as opposed to, if it's not so good evidence, then we take into account that it is, that it's new, it was available at the time of the hearing. I think that the Douglasston stands for that, I think that the plain reading of the statute does not include any type of test in terms of the value of the evidence, just determination whether it's new or it's not. I understand the BSA's position on this, and that's it.
You would agree that there is an interest in settling or deciding a matter on the merits?
I agree, I agree there's an interest in signing the matter on the merits, I agree there's also an interest in the rule of law being maintained.
And you're suggesting they're in opposite, these two positions?
That merits and rule of law are somehow in...
Sometimes, as the, to court a current Supreme Court Justice, sometimes the law does not reach the, what's meritorious, and I'm not, I'm not getting into...
No, they're not meritorious.
I mean, the factual, what I'm talking about is what the factual, being the facts of the case, sometimes the law does not reach the conclusion that you would like it to see based on the facts. I would just like to say that on this matter, and I understand this isn't the scope of this hearing, because this is only a hearing to reopen the case, it's not, it's not really, we're not getting into the merits, per se, at this juncture, but I reserve comments on the actual merits of the new evidence.
If I could, I wanted to, if I can ask you about the, your papers in this application, where you suggested that the board actually didn't have the jurisdiction to hear this? Could you talk a bit more about that?
Yes, insofar, sorry, insofar as this actual, this is not about, this evidence is, at least partly, and the way it was introduced by a DOB, is not solely about continuous use, but the main argument was about legal establishment, and legal establishment was, at least in my opinion, determined by the court, the proper venue would have been to ask for leave of the court to upset their prior decision on legal establishment and go back then to the BSA with the new evidence.
And what, what, if that were to be the case, if that were to actually have been the standard, that they have to move the court to actually, if DOB had to move the court to be able to apprise themselves of a BSA rule and make a BSA application to rehear based on new evidence, what, do you know what the court would be looking at in order, in terms of granting that, like what their...
I think they would do the same assessment that we are currently involved in, in terms of whether this meets the criteria of substantial new evidence, that to reopen the case and upset the case. I'm not arguing that they would do a separate analysis from us, it's just that it's a different, procedurally, what is the proper venue.
So, you see, I'm having a bit of a problem, because the legal theory behind, you know, upsetting the case and reopening the case kind of sits under the position that the case is already over. In this particular case, we're not, you can't make both arguments. You can't say this case is over, but it's not, and I can understand what your argument's going to be, you know, well, it's over to these things and not to this, to this particular, but you're still here, so one of the justices that you're trying to preserve by making a day be the last day of court for that matter is not really available here.
Respectfully, I would disagree, because I think the court has closed off and said that certain of these items are closed, as a matter of law, so that, so that's where I'm saying that, the court has said, "Well, this is decided, we're remanding it on these small issues, and that's it."
But the matter is still before.
It is still before, but they, in their decision, which I submitted, they said, "For this specific issue."
I understand.
But, okay, so, if I can just cut to the chase, so, in your, in your papers, you cite the CPLR 5015, which talks about the standard for obtaining relief from a prior judgment. Do you recall this?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to get to the, to the fact that the case law about that section of the CPLR, which you analogize to this current procedure, is actually a multi-factor test, and it is, its evidence was in existence at the time of the original order of judgment, which we know DOB has stated in their papers it was. The evidence was undiscoverable with due diligence at the time of the original order of judgment, which arguably the DOB affidavit addresses. Third, the evidence is of such a nature that in all probability would produce a different result if a new trial was had, which was the discussion the board was kind of having yesterday at the review session. Four, whether evidence is material and not merely cumulative, they were also discussing whether or not it was actually getting to the, to the, to the meat of the matter. Fifth, not of such a nature as would merely impeach the credibility of an adverse witness, which I don't see as a particular concern in this case. Six, would have gone to the heart of the factual issues of the case, which again was discussed yesterday. And seven, he or she acted with due diligence in discovering the new evidence, which again was, I would say, was addressed in the DOB affidavit. So, knowing those are kind of the seven elements that the court would look to under the CPLR, are you still of the opinion that this procedure here is one that's simply just not, not right? It's not proper?
I don't think that it is the proper venue. As I said in my reply papers...
The proper venue, or the proper application of the CPLR?
The proper venue, I think that, as I stated, I think the proper, if you're going to argue legal establishment as opposed to continuous use, which is a more open issue, but the DOB framed this as, and I understand that this evidence kind of goes to both, but the DOB did frame it as a legal establishment argument.
But you understand the way DOB frames how we should look at, how we should look at evidence is maybe not the way the board will ultimately look at evidence?
I understand that, but the board in previous hearing did, did seemingly take the view that it was proper to look into legal establishment as well as continuous use, so that's why I respond to that. For continuous use, I think is a lesser issue, because I think that the court left that more open, but for legal establishment, the court seemed to have closed that off, and in order to reopen that, I think the proper procedure would be leave the court.
Okay, so, yeah, understood, but so, I just want to again say for the record that the board would, if it decides to rehear based on the new evidence, that it will rehear and look at that evidence in terms of how it might affect all of the issues that relate to the sign. So, if the court, if it's viewed that the court's closed off establishment, there are alternate, alternate methods in which the materials can be viewed, and so, so I just want that clear, that it's not going to be just restricted to looking at establishment.
I under, I understand the board's position.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this? All right, then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Do you want to close it?
Yes.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to grant the rehearing.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Item number two...
Sorry, sorry, don't we have to... We will have to schedule this for hearing, but I, I'm not sure if we have to do it in the hearing, the public hearing process. We can do it administratively, we can do it in the office.
I'm sorry, but you're going to...
Unless we want to do it today?
Now.
I think we're going to end up doing it today when we put this up.
Say again?
I think we're going to end up doing it today when we put the other case over.
But I think these have to be heard separately.
Yeah, they have, right, so, we have to notice the hearing, so it's as if it's a new hearing, so we don't actually need to schedule it today, we can...
Okay.
There has to be a resolution, right, and then it's noticed.
So, I'll put a note to be scheduled.
Yes, to be scheduled.
Item number two, 6713A, four, 945 Zarega Avenue, the Bronx. So, this one's yours, you'll sign this one. No, 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 no.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioners. Ariel Holzer for OTR Media Group and OTR 945 Zarega LLC. The applicant, as I said previously, I attended the review session yesterday, and I understand the board's outlook on this in terms of that there are, it is a very long record, over 2,000 pages long. I have it in hard copy and non-file, and it's both hard to deal with and parse through, and confusing, and I agree with the board on that. I understand that the board would like briefing on the actual questions placed before by the court, and the answer and evidence that goes to each, so it has, this can be simplified and not go through a 2,000-page brief, and I agree with that, those goals. If I could just ask the court to briefly rephrase on the record...
The BSA.
The BSA, sorry. Freudian slip. BSA to rephrase on the record, exactly the, as stated yesterday, what they're looking for in the new submission.
So, the first part of it is, the court was very critical of the things that we didn't look at, so I'm not going to go, I'm not going to say that my list is covering everyone, because you need to review the decision and make sure you hit on everything, but for one, it said, it didn't understand what legalization was, it didn't understand the significance of the CPC report, nor was that attached in the record. We didn't adequately distinguish, and you wouldn't be doing this because you believe that it's identical to, but we didn't adequately distinguish the case from the 2368 case. We didn't provide cases that supported our statement that decision is, that our decision is consistent with prior decisions, which is again something you wouldn't do, because you don't agree that our decision is consistent. And we needed to explain what accessory use for signs means in the zoning resolution, and addressing appellate submission of DOB approvals of advertising signs for other sham leases, some, a lot of this is DOB's job, right? But some of it is, would be your job, too, right? But so, we knew both sides of the issue, so that the court can see the two sides working systematically through the issues, okay? And that, and a lot of this is also, you make in these hearings certain arguments. Again, you attached a lot of exhibits, but it also assumed knowledge of other exhibits, to the extent that there is anything referred to, the 1978 lease, all of that, it needs to be attached.
And it's complete.
Sorry, I apologize if it was lacking before, I think my goal was trying not to make the record huger than it was before, but I understand that that can cause its own problems.
Right, I mean, it's just been impossible to review this, I have to say, because, in part, because there's so much, so many redundant submissions, so you're, you're reading it and you say, "Didn't I read that already, or is this new?" And then make it's...
Certain things are used for different things at different places.
Yes, and so, and again, all of your submissions need to be complete, to show little snippets of something, or one page of something is not helpful, because all it does is open up questions. So, for example, there was a submission of that, I'm trying to remember where the, I think it was the, it was a sign-off about having, I have it here somewhere, about having completed the sign or something, and it says, "Photos attached." Here, this one, this was the work completion letter for Bestway Stores, for example, which you referred to in your papers, right? Your recent papers, and that's a 1980 receipt, I guess. And it says, and the receipt it says, says, "It's a painted sign, photos enclosed," and it's part of a binder with holes in it. So, if they were so organized that they had a binder in which they kept all of this where the photos, don't submit anything that's only partial, because all it does is open more questions. Drag this on, right? Okay. Let's see.
So, is the reverse true, if you do not have the photos to support that document, then don't submit it?
Or explain, I think, what's the...
You have to explain, yeah. I mean, if you're using it to cite for the proposition that something exists, then you have to explain why it's not the entire document, right? And so, we don't want partial submissions that are just, yeah, like kind of paraphrasing what's actually, what you believe the story is. And then, okay, so, and I did mention, the court admonished the board for not taking you up on your offer to prove that the 1,585 square feet of leased space was not a principal use of Philip Morris, so, or not a principal use, but let's say it wasn't an actual active use by the, or even a passive use storage, for example, of Philip Morris. So, I don't know exactly how you prove that it wasn't, you need to give us a complete record, which if it shows that it was, it shows that it was, because my concern is there's no incentive to show that it was used. So, a photograph of the day Philip Morris moves into the space, or of the day it moves out, isn't, isn't helping, it needs to be in the middle of the lease, right?
Right, I think part of it may also be showing that the, that that space was actually accessory to the sign, as opposed to the sign being accessory to that space.
Well, that's, that's up to you to, but how do you prove it, right? So, you're relying just on square footage alone, I would argue that square footage alone isn't how you figure out signs, and in fact, if we just look at the sign regulations, which I've mentioned before in other hearings, I don't know if it was in this last one, because they're all blending together, the accessory business signs are most normally associated with retail, and where you've got 40 retail establishments, right? And so, the size of the retail establishment is fairly immaterial, for example, if the, if all of the establishments are, let's just say for argument's sake, they're doctor's offices that don't rely on big advertising signs, and the doctor's office makes a deal with the landlord, or landlord makes a deal with the doctor's office and says, you know, "You don't really need your allowable signs, but my McDonald's on the corner really wants to use all whatever the frontage allows in a manufacturing district," which at the time was anything, right? So, my McDonald's wants to use 2,000 square feet of the sign, will you forego your sign? Then arguably, DOB would allow them to have a 2,000-square-foot sign for one establishment, right? So, it's not...
Right, if it was a bona fide use on the law.
Well, I'm talking about all, all accessory signs are allowed for, no matter what the size, the little newspaper stand is allowed an accessory sign, right? So, and the sign can be up to the maximum allowed in the zoning district and in manufacturing districts at one time, there were no sign limits.
Right, and I think DOB could speak to this, but, and probably will have to speak to it as well, but I think part of the test goes to whether the use is actually a bona fide real use as opposed to simple size.
I'm not talking about the bona fide real use, I'm talking about when, I'm talking about when a business is allowed to have a sign, it's allowed to have an accessory sign of any size, so it doesn't matter if it's a newsstand that sells chocolate bars, if it wants to say Joe's Newsstand, it can say it, and at that time, in manufacturing districts, of any size. So, if we use the hypothetical of Joe's Newsstand, any size, so it doesn't matter at all that it's renting 300 square feet and its sign is 1,500 square feet, if the zoning district allows it. So, right, so, and then, let's see, what other things did we need? Okay, I think you can listen to the review session.
Yeah, that's fine.
And hear the rest, are there any other things that you want? So, what I want to have done is that these briefs are limited in your argument to 10 pages, not including your exhibits, okay? But that the exhibits have to be very clearly explained, why are you including this exhibit? And don't just attach a bunch of stuff and we're supposed to figure it out. And no more introduction of any evidence, we just had a hearing to consider allowing new evidence, and there was a big battle about it, no new evidence, unless we specifically asked for it, which was to respond to the court, right? Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Andrew Wallace, again, representing the Department of Buildings. I also attended the review session yesterday and reviewed the tape this morning, and certainly I realize that there are, while there weren't questions on the first matter, there are plenty of questions and plenty of explaining to do on this, on this matter, so. Just going over the notes that I took yesterday, and that I saw on the video, I understand the overarching concern is, the overarching task is to address each of the court's concerns from the remand decision, also to expand upon the legalization process, which we described in the prior papers.
Yeah, you're going to go into it much more, you're talking about it to someone who has never heard the word legalization before, that, that's the idea, so, back to legalization 101.
Okay, okay. And there was also to, the distinction between the Metro self-storage and the Philip Morris, and the, to be accessory, the sign has to be accessory to the tenancy, sharpening that, that distinction, that...
Yeah, there was a paragraph, which I absolutely didn't understand. Somehow or other, you talked about the Metro storage lease, and then somehow or other, it switched into the Philip Morris lease, as if they were the same thing.
Okay.
And they're not.
We'll make that distinct, no, obviously, we'll make that distinction, and then responding to the citations that applicant made, and were cited in the, in the remand decision on our past practices, the agency's past practices.
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
Don't think so, so again, oh, again, just listening to the tape, so we don't go through it all over again. And, yeah, I think the biggest thing is, the court asked about, and I don't know how DOB has been handling this, but asked about those signs where they had been these accessory signs, and then advertising was allowed by DOB. So, the question is, you know, are, were they allowed by DOB permanently, or has DOB gone back to enforce on those signs? Kind of what's going on in that situation, right? Because those are statements, just like in those other two signs that were cited most recently by appellate, where it turns out DOB knew what actually happened with those signs, the...
Borden.
Borden Avenue.
And Van Wick.
And Van Wick, so, so appellate makes a statement about Borden and Van Wick, and then you have to go, DOB has to go and find out what happened with those signs. So, there was a statement made in the prior case about a lot of signs, and I guess DOB never went back to explain what happened in the case of those prior signs, so, those signs. So, you need to do the same exercise that you did for Borden and Van Wick, and in the event that they have not been, there is no explanation, then, there is no explanation, in other words, it was legalized, or it was withdrawn, or it was taken down, or something like that, then explain to us why it was approved and not enforced against.
And these were cases that were cited in the last remand, in the remand decision?
Correct, so the judge made reference to those signs, and I do remember there were, there was anyway, a statement that there were a lot of signs, but I don't know if the statement included the address of the signs. So, of course, you can't possibly respond if you don't know what the addresses are, but that would be a response as well. We don't know which signs, and, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, I think, I think that's it. Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you.
So, I guess if we can discuss briefing schedules, I think it might be, might be helpful to do simultaneous submissions and replies?
My only request from the board is, I'm going to be out of country for a few weeks next month, so if I can have a little bit more time.
Okay, so rather, so maybe instead of three or four weeks, you want five weeks, six weeks to prepare your...
The more, the better, six weeks, yeah.
Six? Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. And DOB, how much time would you like for yours, your, I'm sorry.
Simultaneous.
Six months, six weeks for the first submission, and then to do your simultaneous replies, how much time would you, you like, three weeks?
Three weeks after that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, the first submission would then be due April 30th? One, two, three, four, five, six, right? And then the simultaneous replies would be, one, two, three, sorry, that was May 1st, is a Wednesday.
Sorry, can we actually make it a week later, that's the day I'm actually coming back?
Oh, okay, so, first submission, simultaneous submission, May 8th?
Okay, thank you.
And then, one, two, three, simultaneous replies, May 29th? I could even give you until June 5th, actually, because then that would be perfect for the next hearing on June 25th.
Okay.
So, simultaneous submissions, May 1st?
May...
I'm sorry, May 8th.
May 8th.
Sorry, just did that. Simultaneous replies on June 5th?
June 5th now?
Yes, give them an extra week for the hearing on June 25th.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Continue, June 25th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number 3, 3058 BZ, 18417 Harding Expressway, Queens. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and, sorry, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the, sorry, the truth in your testimony before the board and respond honestly to the board member's questions? Okay. Truth, whole, nothing but the truth.
Elise Foladere, on behalf of the applicant, sorry he had to attend CPC this morning, but he wanted me to let you know that your comments were heard, and they will revise the plan to show a three-foot sidewalk around the building, and will fix the gate in the rear of the building. And they asked for three weeks if possible.
So I'm just wondering, so in terms of commending the plans and resubmitting, that's not something you can do today because of scheduling problems?
Yeah, it's not possible.
Okay. All right.
I also did provide the applicant with a copy of Mr. Euler's paper or letter.
Oh, of whose letter?
Mr. Euler.
Oh, Auburn years.
Auburn Dale Associates. Yeah, he had asked for copies.
So they did, you didn't get a copy of the Auburn Dale submission, is that it?
Well, when I spoke to the applicant yesterday, Mr. Rothkrug, he had asked for a copy of it because he said he didn't see it, I guess.
So, okay. But need the time.
So three weeks is April 10th, so that would be a hearing April 30th?
Oh, Mr. Euler wants to speak.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right, sorry.
I will move out of the way.
Yeah.
Mr. Euler, please. Oh, okay. This is new? Or it's from the other day?
Yes. Okay.
My name is Henry Euler. I'm the first vice president of the Auburn Dale Improvement Association. The site and the application lies within the boundary lines of my civic. It actually, we actually overlap with the Harding Heights Civic Association at this point, representing my civic organization with this testimony. I brought in some pictures of the site just to reinforce the points that, you know, need to be addressed. There's a picture of the dumpster that's not been enclosed yet. There's also some kind of a winch-type device next to the dumpster that should be enclosed with the dumpster. There's a picture also of that commercial truck that's still there. It's been there for at least two weeks on the site. Once the application is granted, if it's granted, there really shouldn't be any storage of commercial or unplated vehicles on the site anymore because they're doing away with their service area base from what we understand, and they're going to have a convenience store in its place. There's also pictures of the back of the building where the gate needs to be fixed. Right now, it's attached to, the gate is attached with a strap, and behind the building there's a shed, and there's also something that looks like a fuse box and meters and stuff. And for his own protection, we really feel that the operator should make sure that that back gate is secured and locked.
That's a gate that goes from the street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it goes from the street into the back where the shed is. We appreciate that the commissioners want the dumpster enclosed and that you are addressing the need for safety for the pedestrians and patrons of the proposed convenience store while they enter and exit the store. We did mention about the gate. If not already included in previous variances, there should be a condition in any new variance granted stating that there be no parking on the sidewalks and no storage of any vehicles, including commercial and unplated vehicles on the site. And we need to have the hours of operation stated clearly, please. The operator had approached the chair of the community board because he was concerned about his signage that he wanted to put up, and he felt that the community board was blocking his ability to get a sign. But the community board never addressed that issue, so I guess he has to get that straightened out with the agency that handles signage. We, excuse me, we just want to make sure that the signage is appropriate for a residential area and that it's not overpowering. So all in all, the civic recommends approval of this application with all the conditions listed in our testimony and everything that the community board also included. We prefer a term of five years, however, if the board decides on a grant of 10 years, it should commence from the date that the previous variance expired.
Which was...
2017.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so the instructions obviously are that, so the dumpster enclosure and so on is supposed to have been done now, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm losing track now with how, so the...
That was on the last here.
The, no, so the new dispenser obviously wouldn't be done now. The sidewalks obviously wouldn't be done now, but I don't really see a reason why the dumpster enclosure can't be done now since it's, unless, so that's what I'm lost track with, is the planting area already in place?
We can have in the next...
Maybe not.
No.
No, it's not. So all of that has to be built?
Right. And the parking layout will have to be revised and...
Right, okay. So then, so there should also be a note about the, so the gate is really twisted according to this photograph. So in addition to it, I don't know, you said the gate would be...
They're fixing the gate in the rear of the building.
Okay. So that needs to be fixed. I mean, either replaced or, I mean, it's very, it's sort of very twisted?
Yeah.
And in addition to which a lock put on the gate.
A lock, okay.
Okay.
So still April 10th and April 30th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Item number 4, 64559 BZ, 1028224 Flatlands Avenue, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member's questions? This item number 4, 64559 BZ.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik PC. I don't think you had any comments.
All right. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so we can make a motion to close.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
Application is granted.
Thank you very much.
Item number 8, 5899 BZ. Raise your hands. Yeah, you're right. Number 5, sorry, 5899 BZ, 1810 Utopia Parkway, Queens, losing track. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member's questions? Okay. Whose case is, I was just going to respond?
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik PC, on behalf of the applicant. As requested, we changed to tandem parking. You asked for an additional space, so you have a bubble set and a non-bubble set on the site plan. On the first page, you can see number 5 added in tandem as requested. And so all of this just shows that the zoning analysis was changed to add a parking space, plans were added to parking space, the bubble plan showed the added parking space, and then certification from the architect. And it was submitted this morning.
Commissioner Chanda, you said something about reorienting the filling dispenser?
That is the proposal. The proposal is to reorient the dispenser.
And go from 4 to 6?
4 to 6.
Oh, okay.
Which does improve the circulation and reduces the conflict within the site. I'm assuming that's...
Okay. I thought that you were suggesting something else. Okay.
And then we, the BP operator and BP understands that your issue about timing and the new proposal, if you'll accept it, is 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM and closed on Sundays.
Closed Sundays.
So, sorry, what are the hours of opening?
6:00 AM to 7:00 PM because they would like to be able to have people on the way home from work.
Uh-huh.
And then closed on Sundays as you asked.
Okay. That seems more reasonable to me. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. And then, oh, and then they will fix the sidewalk when they redo this, when they fix up the site.
Is the lighting still high on Utopia Parkway?
Is it still high?
Is what still high?
The lighting.
We had had that discussion on last time.
I think so too.
And because that was okay, because that's the commercial frontage.
I see, okay.
Whereas we were more concerned about overspillage of lighting along 168 and the other ones, which are about to...
169.
169.
And their streets are...
It looks great on 18th Avenue and also looks well on 19th Avenue. 168, 169 Street has, I'm just going to check on the map.
I mean, it isn't, this is totally surrounded by streets, so...
Yeah. So the thing is, the advantage of human spread on streets is its free lighting, right? Instead of the city providing the lighting, the property owner does.
Yeah, so there is no concern, yeah, that's the answer. Resident, okay.
And it falls off by the time it gets into the roadbed, pretty much.
Yeah.
So it's at a good level for safety on the sidewalk.
And we just met with the community board and you got that they were good with the signs.
Yeah, no, I think it's actually an asset as opposed to...
So, okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Mr. Euler.
Okay. Do you have to go to the applicant first? Did you have to see the applicant?
Oh, yeah. I was just...
Excuse me. My name is Henry Euler. I'm the first vice president of the Auburn Dale Improvement Association. The site and this application lies on the boundary line of my civic organization, and we overlap in this area with two Whitestone civic groups. I'm representing my civic organization with this testimony. And for full disclosure, I am a customer of this business. My civic organization agrees with the board that the cracked sidewalks need to be replaced, that the dumpster needs to be enclosed, and that there should be no parking at any time on the sidewalks. Regarding the time, I'm very, very happy to hear that, excuse me, the applicant has chosen to change the hours to 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM and close on Sunday because the other proposal that it be open seven days a week, 6 to 10, was, would be unacceptable to the civic association. We've received no complaints regarding this business, and from my own experience as a customer, I know that the operator is honest and respected person in the community. We did receive one comment from a member, excuse me, regarding the rear of the building on the site. The site's on a triangular block, so there is a south side and a west side of the business behind the actual place of operation. And the complaint, the comment was about the space between the sidewalk and the curb on the south side and on the west side. And it appears that, well, I went to check, there is asphalt laid down all across that space between the sidewalk and the curb, and it goes right up to the trees. So the person that made the comment, and I agree with him, said that, you know, how do the trees get water if it's all cemented in and asphalted in in that way? So we're not sure who actually did this, whether it's the applicant or somebody from the past, but we think it should be removed. And we think, we're not sure if it's the city's duty to do that since it's on city property, or whether it's the applicant's duty to do that. There's four pictures that are, that we submitted, and it shows the two different sides. One and four is the south side, and two and three is the western side. Also on picture three, there's a little bit of damage to the retaining wall at close to the bottom. I kind of put a circle around it, and it should really be repaired before it gets worse. So if all of these issues can be resolved, the civic has no objection to the BSA granting this variance renewal for a period of 10 years. Of course, all previous relevant conditions and past variances should be included in any new variance granted. And if not already in a previous variance, there should be a condition stating that there be no parking on the sidewalks and no storage of commercial or unplated vehicles on the site. Only vehicles awaiting service should be parked on the site overnight, and the hours of operation should be clearly stated. And the civic also appreciates the fact that the applicant filed before the expiration date. So all in all, we approve this application. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on this one? Okay. Elise Foladere. So one of my questions is, I mean, how do the trees get water? They break the asphalt. That's what you're actually seeing, fighting against the asphalt, then they break it, and they have their own access now. But I don't know if this is the part that's regulated by Department of Parks where they require that there be an area with those little grills around it or something like that, but the effect of the trees there is that they just simply break the sidewalk, right? Sorry, when you talk there, that overwhelms.
I apologize, I apologize.
So please don't talk. So, yeah, so you said that they're going to be repairing the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, when they, because as you saw, they're putting in new dispensers and a new canopy.
Right.
And this is the sidewalk along Utopia.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, and this photo is a Utopia photo, but, so the issue is that...
This is actually the other one.
This one says 19th Avenue between Utopia and 169.
So this is behind the back of the building.
Yeah, and then this one is...
The 169.
169, and this one's 169. So when they are doing that work, since they have concrete guys there, or asphalt guys, they should be doing, handling the extension of the sidewalk. And they need to find out from Department of Parks how you protect the trees. I think they create, you know, effectively, it's tree pits around it, but you've already got a tree, so you don't need a pit, right? So there needs to be some, I'm fairly certain that the shop owner is responsible for the sidewalks all the way to the curb. So, okay.
Would you like to make that a condition?
Yeah, so that would be a condition. So it's to repair the sidewalks from property line to curb all the way around the site and allow for tree pits.
Okay, so not just Utopia, the other two sidewalks?
Yeah, on all, all three, all four frontages.
Okay.
Which they're responsible for anyway. That's a DOT requirement. Okay. And then to add to that, that the knee wall that is on 169th Street, oh, yeah, it's 169th Street, that it be repaired, and there's one fence portion that's buckling there that also needs to be repaired on 169. Yeah. And then...
The operational...
And then the, yeah, and then the operational plan would be included in the conditions, right? Okay. And again, to repeat, no parking on the sidewalk, which is not allowed anyway, and as Mr. Euler suggested, and no storage... as Mr. Euler suggested, and no storage of vehicles other than those awaiting service. And then we have the hours of operation now of 6:00 AM to 10, to 7:00 PM, closed Sundays. Okay? So with all of that as a condition, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Okay. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on those conditions. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, 22300BZ, 272 West 10th Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth?
This is adjourned, you don't need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, yes, sorry, I apologize, yes.
Man, Diane Adi, on behalf of the applicant, we're requesting an adjournment because we need more time to work out the fire department rooftop variance. They're working through that, the architect is resubmitting to the fire department today.
Okay.
And they don't have to go back to LPC though, so we're just waiting for fire department. We have DEP approval and sign off, so once FDNY approval is in, we'll have final proposed plans, submit a final tech memo with the final proposed plans, and then the full set for the board.
Okay. I think that you wanted April 23rd.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that's.
Doable.
Doable, but we could do the next week, we could do April 30th.
It would just be for, uh.
Yeah, but.
We have 20, 29 so far on April 23rd, yeah, so.
We have too much to do, sorry.
It's 21 on the 30th, so it just doesn't.
Okay.
It's the reality, unfortunately.
Right, right. Sure.
So a submission of April 10th for hearing April 30th?
Sure.
Okay.
Hopefully before that.
Oh, your submission before that?
Hopefully.
Happily. Thank you so much.
Is there any way, this couldn't be closed? This, that it would create a little bit more finality for them to seek funding.
Is there outstanding environmental?
I thought it's an environmental question.
So does this need to update a tech memo to reflect any of the plan changes?
Yeah.
All environmental's closed.
But doesn't the tech memo then go to essentially establish that everything is okay?
Uh, no, the tech memo is updated, and then incorporates all the sign offs that the agencies have already.
And it would include the final plans with the revised rooftop layout.
Okay, so wait a second. So the reason we kept this open is because of LPC?
No, DEP.
No, FDNY is, is, yeah, I suppose of FDNY, so.
The time we left it open because DEP, they need another week before, after the last hearing to get their sign off letter, so that's why we left it open.
Oh, okay.
So what we've received, the sign off letters, and LPC, it doesn't need to go because?
It doesn't, it doesn't, the architect told me there's not, the change of the facade is not significant, they're getting a rooftop, they're working on a rooftop variance, and the fire department can speak with more detail to the revised layout, but they, they don't have to go back to LPC, they've been in contact with the staff showing the, the changes, and they said they don't have to go back.
I don't know, that's, that's.
Can we just get a letter from LPC staff saying that big joke needs to come back?
Yes, we need something from LPC. I don't feel comfortable closing without LPC sign off, we, you know.
Can we reopen if there's an issue? It just would help them move their funding forward.
I don't know that, why does it help them move their funding forward?
Because they have finality. It seems that they're going to be granted soon, so it makes the investors.
They could listen to this video.
They, I tried that, they said that the YouTube link is not something to.
Submit to creditors.
Right.
But a closing isn't a submission to creditors.
Whether it's closed or, if, I just find it hard to believe it makes much of a difference being closed and decided, but I guess if you're, these are, I imagine.
It's just a step forward.
Educated investors, they.
Yeah, so the closing, the only way they know it closes is that.
I understand.
They listen to the video.
No, there's a disposition sheet that's printed on our website.
And you get a copy of the disposition sheet?
Often people have obtained those as a, in lieu of resolutions, if you have a disposition sheet saying, look, it was granted.
Oh, granted is different.
But no, I'm just saying.
They just misrepresented it.
It would say closed.
The disposition sheet, the disposition report is posted on the website.
And also, you can also.
So here's what you could do, why don't you do a second call, get in touch with landmarks, and get them to send us something that says that it doesn't need to come back. I'm uncomfortable with closing something with landmarks.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Second call.
All right. Item number seven, 16-12BZ, 184 Nostrand Avenue, Brooklyn. No, this one, sir. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Good morning. Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session. In response to yesterday's review session, we made the change on the kitchen, which I apologize, I missed, and everything, we did catch, we missed that one line, but we did change it.
You did change it?
We made, we put it back to the 830 line. So we also added to those plans.
Sorry, put what back to the what?
The kitchen was enlarged on these plans.
Right.
We reversed the kitchen to the size and dimensions of the 830 plans.
Ah, okay.
We also added a note to all of the plans saying that no catering, no commercial catering will be at this premises. This morning, we received an email from Ms. Mathias asking us to include no banquet hall as well.
Right.
We made, we made those changes. Unfortunately, I had time to get you copies of the plans from yesterday. I did not have the time to get the plans from today, but it's on submit, or I could show you my record on my computer.
Okay, so you don't, but, but in terms of, can you show me the meat kitchen, the kitchen area? Does that, we didn't see.
It was on the plans from yesterday, also didn't change today, but it's on the plans from today as well. The plans from today are dated 3/19/19, today's date, and we also included the architect's certification with regards to the plans.
Thank you. Yeah, I can.
If you want, bigger plan.
I think it was.
1612BZ.
No, okay. So I think they had moved it down to here on the last version. Yeah, just give us a second, because. That's a moving target. Okay.
That's what I thought. That's what I have here. I don't know.
What, you're sorry? Yeah, okay, good. Okay, but the only other thing that remains then is this, the elevator now only goes to the second?
Right, there are offices along there, which we find the utility inhabiting an elevator to go to those offices. It, again, as mentioned yesterday, this is a BSA case, if they do request or desire to put catering and have weddings at this facility, they do have to come back to the board for permission to change the plans. So it's not intended, we've marked it on our plans, we're okay with it as a condition to the resolution.
Okay. Can I have you address the?
The tech memo is the next, if we're, if we're done with the plans. The technical memo was updated. The reason for the update was that the direction of Mr. Costanza, in January of this year, when this issue came back, the prior council updated the tech memo to show it at 49 feet. We backed away from that and brought it back to the 47 feet, which was reviewed and approved by DEP. So the tech memo is done to clarify the record.
Thank you. Okay. All right, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make, I think we're done, everybody okay?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to close then. Chair promoter? Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion on a, on a bunch of conditions. So it goes like this, due to air quality concerns, no play area on the roof of the first floor, and no, of course, access or play area to the roof, the actual building roof. There needs to be a closed window condition with mechanical ventilation on the facade that faces the rear, that's marked on the plans, but I just want to be clear. All of the environmental conditions shown on the plans should be included in the resolution, so you just keep drawing. Condition that there's to be no commercial catering or banquet facilities, no elevator access to the roof, I already said. And to underscore the catering and banquet, absolutely no rental of the auditorium for non-school related events. I want, all those conditions need to appear on the C of O. And then in terms of buses, tell me when you're ready.
Ready.
Okay, except for pickups and drop offs, buses are to be parked off-site at 101 Varick Street pursuant to valid lease agreements. No bus parking is permitted in front of the building. The owner shall obtain a no idling sign for buses, except during loading and unloading. The bus loading program and conditions for loading and unloading that were provided on April, I think it's 26?
2018, I imagine.
It says 16.
16, okay.
Yeah, but I could be wrong.
It's a 12, oh, okay.
It's an SOC from 12.
It was, yeah, it first, it was his first in hearing in 2015, so that's.
Okay, it's possible, so I think it was that. Should be incorporated into the resolution and, oh, and the approved plan set. So there was a diagram, so when, with the whole set, include the bus loading diagram. So on those conditions, a motion to grant.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. New cases, item number eight, 27886BZ, 1677 Bruckner Boulevard, The Bronx.
Do you have a receipt? Raise your right hand. Is this the only person?
Yeah, but you should do.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnick PC. We did provide the community board with the contact information, and they wanted it because they did feel it was such a beautiful site, they wanted to be able to, community partnership with the site, it has a huge parking lot. So, and there was a back and forth yesterday, but it really is a site that's kept really, really, really nice. You can see from the photographs, you can see from visiting people like this White Castle.
Okay, we had asked for, actually in a nutshell, so we had, we had asked for photos of the perimeter that's shared by adjacent properties, was that something we still need? And we have lumen levels are high at the property line that's shared with the church.
I thought there was a discussion yesterday, because they kind of, she, you asked for that, and then Commissioner Brown said that she visited, and then she talked about that boulder or something, and so the light wasn't hitting, and it was a nice.
That's my open question, so do we think that these, these additional submissions are necessary? Photos of the interior or of changing the lumen levels so it doesn't fall on the?
I don't think we need the interior photographs, the photographs that have been provided is very clear, and I think, I didn't visit recently, but I've gone by that side, and I've always seen it in, in its natural condition.
And we'll be back in five years, instead of ten.
And in terms of the lighting level, it is not abutting any residential uses.
There, there is one residential use, but there's also a huge tree that's.
That's true, right.
That's actually there, huge. No, the lumen high, lumen levels, lumen levels were at the church, not at the residential.
Not at the residential.
Yeah, so if we're, I think there's actually a little of an incline between, I don't know if that affects the lighting though, you know, because they're, they always measure the size if it's flat. If everyone's okay with it, we can close. All right, are there any speakers on this? Then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was, that was.
Yeah, it was just closed, you have to keep.
Sorry.
So, and then a motion to grant.
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Uh, yeah, aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you. You're allowed to say something when you think it feels like it's off.
I just feel like you know what's right.
Item number nine, 120.
Before we go to item number nine, Darrell, do you have a copy of the proof of notice of hearing?
For number nine?
Yeah, because we didn't have notice of hearing.
He said it was re-uploaded yesterday.
Yeah, but I haven't seen it, so how do we know it's the right one, or it was properly noticed?
Well, we should call it, so we can.
Yes, but I want to.
I just know it as empty.
But I can't have a hearing if I don't have notice.
I know, but we have to call it at the very least.
Yeah, okay.
While we look for it.
Because the file is still empty.
The file's still empty, right?
Have you re-uploaded, or, I'm sorry, never mind.
No, she's on the.
I haven't.
SharePoint. It's 1202693BZ.
Just, just one second, procedurally, we do, otherwise we can't have a hearing.
We have to.
We could call it, not have a hearing, that's true. Yeah.
Let's see.
Do you have a copy of the notice?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, community board 12.
Notice of hearing.
Notice of hearing, March 4th.
Yeah, okay.
2019 stamped. This is city planning Bronx, Borough President Bronx, and City Council District.
So that's the hearing.
Hearing.
What about the initial?
No, that, that we have, we know by kind of inference, because community board recommends.
That's true.
Can you pass those down to here?
Yeah. You see it? Oh, it was loaded?
Yeah.
Okay, on SharePoint. Okay, okay. All right. Good, okay.
You may come.
Have you called that case yet?
Yeah.
Right, we have.
City Council. Yeah, but I have to sway you in.
Okay.
You took these today? Did you pass those? Are you the only two people appearing? Okay, please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, please present.
Tony, can you call it one more time? Sorry.
12693BZ, 1225 East 233rd Street, The Bronx.
Eight, your names, please.
Okay, my name is Mohamed Al-Sawir, I'm an attorney, I represent the applicant.
My name is Ibrahim Ansi from Tashid Building Consultants, represent the applicant.
So, Madam Chair, we're here today to answer any questions or concerns about the application that our clients have submitted.
Were you aware that we had a review session yesterday?
Yes, yes, you are.
So it's more than answering concerns, we said a lot of things yesterday, perhaps you could just jump in and talk about them.
Okay, sure. I'll start with.
Identify yourself again, I'm sorry.
Ibrahim Manci, representing the applicant. Yeah, we heard the review session yesterday, it's mainly about the maintenance of the space, about the tire shop, and they heard a lot of tires all over, but this morning we were there, and we take recent pictures of the roof, and it's empty, as you see, probably you saw Google, if you Google it, yes, you're definitely going to see it, I don't know from when.
You can see them hanging above the roof, when you look at that photograph of the roof, you can see there's things on the roof.
Well, it's, I heard yesterday it was from Google, the picture.
From the satellite, from 2019.
Satellite, yes, I don't know from since when, to be honest, but again, this is a recent picture.
So the satellite image is marked 2019, and the photograph that you just provided, if you look, you can see above the roofline, little black things that are sticking above the parapet wall, so just because.
Yes, it probably used to be, but the owner took care of it.
But you didn't give us a picture of the roof with, you know, going.
Last time, yeah, we did not, because we didn't got an, like, we don't know that there's even a tire or anything on the roof, so.
When did you submit these pictures from, that referencing?
When were these taken?
Yeah, today, today.
Okay, so I haven't seen them yet, but from what I understand, they're taken today, and there's still evidence of tires?
When you look at the building, and you can see a little bit of black things above the parapet line, but of course, the other pictures that were provided didn't show the tires either on the roof, it's not until we looked in the satellite that we learned where the tires all went.
Yes.
Right?
It's even, to be honest.
The fire department is here, they probably did an inspection.
Can you say that one more time?
The racks also seem to have been removed.
Even the racks are out, there's no racks on the site, because what happened, these comments use, come on the notice of comments before, and we address them that, we make sure that everything has to be out from the site.
Okay, so when was this done? When was?
I'm not, I don't have the exact.
When was the last time you saw the site without tires?
After, after we responded to the comments.
Okay.
We told them, just make sure everything, whatever the BSA said, and the community board as well, they raised the same issues, and they are.
Right, but I saw the site on Friday, so between Friday and today, the racks are gone, and the tires don't appear to be on the roof or.
So the owner is on the top of his place on his.
It seems like the owner did a cleanup between Friday and today.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I'd like to have fire department report if they already inspected, I don't know if they did, yeah.
Good morning, John Daly, Fire Department. I did submit a complaint to Bronx District Officers to visit the site, and had gotten a call from an inspector yesterday that they, he did observe some tires up on the roof, and that there were tires in other areas of the site. I gave him a copy of the site plan so we could mark it, so I'm just waiting for his report, so then I'll submit it to the board.
Okay, great.
Do you remember what time he visited, or around?
He said he was there about 3 o'clock yesterday.
In the afternoon?
In the afternoon, yes, because after comments were made, I sent the complaint in immediately, and it was processed, assigned to an inspector right away.
Thank you.
So I'm just waiting for their report.
Okay, thank you. And we're also going to be sending our own compliance officer to do a thorough inspection, so, yeah.
This could, it would be a lot easier if you had exact times, because when things like this happen, that, it just, it makes, it brings up a question of what's really going on. So if it could be more forthcoming on the next appearance, just, if you get the information, have the information.
Okay, what, the time of, or the day they removed it?
But also going forward, it's not just removing it.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
They have to, yes, definitely, it has to be out.
For your own safety, and it's not what we had approved, so it's combination of those.
And, and those tires are going to go someplace, because you can't just dispose of tires.
That's something the owner has to.
We will provide, we will provide some type of evidence to show how the owner basically resolved this matter.
Fantastic.
Maybe a statement from him.
Don't speak all at the same time, please, one person at a time, the recording cannot hear when everyone speaks at the same time. One person, let them finish, then you speak, or the other way around.
I answered the commissioner's question in reference to the way how to basically resolve the tires, the remaining tires issue, and I explained that we will instruct our client to show some type of evidence to prove that he disposed the tires, like a dispose receipt. So this issue will be taken care of.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Part of your tire issue is your flat fix tire business that's behind the building. Is that being done away with? Because if it isn't, then you're just going to collect the tires again over the next couple of months.
Well, I did ask the owner, and he said it is an accessory to the repair shop that we have inside, if anything needs to be repaired, we just send them on a back, just accessory with, for the same business, so if that to be a condition, to be, the boards will put it, that's, to remove it completely, that's.
It should be removed, because that's adjacent to residential, you shouldn't have a whole outdoor, open operation of fixing tires, hoisting cars, and that should all be done in the building.
All right.
Tire repair? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Manci, is that?
Yes, Manci.
What is your relationship to, what's your role?
I'm in the consultant's office.
The consultant of what?
The engineers' office, exactly.
Oh, you're the, okay, so the drawings that we see are from that office?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so, so we had a lot of other comments, the tires being the most extreme, because it's actually a danger.
For the lighting, yeah, for the lighting, the most, basically the whole business is operating away from the residential district, the residential houses behind the building itself, maybe two or three lights on the top of the building, as the owner stated that, are new, may be going to be removed, they are semi indirect lights, he stated there is no complaints from the neighborhood at all, but I directed him, they have to be less brighter.
As part of the submission, you do need to provide a plan, which is the lumen study, and that will tell you the extent of the overspillage of the lights on the residential abutting properties. Based on that, we will direct you, and I would suggest you should take the proactive position of minimizing spillage of lighting, light into the residential.
It's more than minimizing, the rule is that there can be no light.
It should be zero.
That extends past the property line, that joins other people's properties, it can spill onto the sidewalk, but not onto other people's properties.
It should be zero when it hits the abutting residential properties. Thank you for that.
Landscaping.
The landscaping, we're not changing anything from previous plans, and they are on that track area, the tired tracks removed, and I show you the pictures.
Well, we saw the photos, those, those plants, I'm not sure if they're going to make it.
Which ones?
I saw some new abutting plants that's been added along the lawn.
The whole, the whole area is a landscape, and it's not paved, I don't know if that's the part of the previous applicant approval, was on the.
The photos that you submitted shows a little bit of that, shows dirt.
With a couple of little plants, I think you need a full landscaping plan for that area, done by a professional landscape architect.
So the thing is, these little things that get bought by, usually by the owner, by going to some local gardening store, and then they put them in, and they hope that that's landscaping, they never work. It needs to be done by someone who's a professional, who knows what grows, and so on, and we rely on a landscaping drawing done by a professional, that tells us what the plants are that are going to be installed, so we actually need to see that.
Sure.
So it specifies the plants, it tells us the spacing of the plants, how many of each type, and that's what we use to know that you're in compliance the next time with the planting, and it needs to be maintained, so it can't just be, you put them in, they die the first year, and then that's the end of that, right?
And in the long run, you end up saving money, because they tell you, they, you're planting it at the appropriate time.
Sure.
Which, when you return here, you're not going to have to redo it all over again.
Okay.
In addition, I think in order to ensure that the tire business does not go back into business, the area behind the building should be landscaped in ground, because on your plans, you have unenclosed tire racks, you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, six sets of unenclosed tire racks in that northwestern portion of the site that should not be there.
Okay.
So that's, you're talking about the, the area.
Like five, the five feet.
That's where the current, that, based on the.
The existing plan.
Has the tire rack.
But, but in terms of where the parking is, what are those four lines that are on?
These are unenclosed tire racks.
Oh, okay.
Unenclosed tire racks, this is where the business was, and there was like a kind of shed, here.
Okay. This is a question.
But we already removed these tire racks from the drawings, and we resubmitted it to the.
So I think the.
I just want to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to know what, Ms. Commissioner Hartley-Brown, are you asking for them to dig it down, or to?
Always. Landscaping is planting.
For those five, that five-foot area going from, to the curb?
I think yes, because I think there needs to be a barrier between this business and the homes behind it, and the only way to ensure that that tire business is not going to move those racks right back against that lot line, is to have a four or five foot in the ground, thick hedge kind of landscaping that blocks.
So, and that all, all property line side, and the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Picking up on what Commissioner Hartley-Brown said earlier, you're not allowed to use, do any, fixing up any parts outside your repair shop. Now, if you think you need it, there's a question, if you need to expand a portion of the builder building to do the repair work within that, you know, this is something you need to look into, and see if you want, you want to enclose that operation.
The point is, no work is allowed to be done on a car outside of the building, and this, this is not an outdoor activity that was allowed, right? So to the extent that cars are being worked on outside of the building, that's not permitted. So the suggestion is, if it's turning out that you have a lot of work that needs to be done outside, it's because there's not enough room inside, perhaps you could look at enlarging the building, I don't see.
But I think that, just to caution you, if this is a pre-61 variance, you won't be able to do that, so it may be the case that the operator will have to reduce the number of services they provide on this site to accommodate, to be able to do all of them within the building, so that may be a conversation you have to have with your client as to what they need out of the site, whether the building, as it exists, is sufficient to accommodate all those.
Either that, or it's a new variance.
Or it's, you're in an, I mean, yeah, that turns into a different case.
Yeah.
Any other issues that the board may be?
Your signage, you have excessive signage.
I think signage, there are two signs, three, as indicated on the plans, even on the previous approved plans, yes.
I don't think, I don't think Commissioner Hartley-Brown is just referring to those two signs, but it's also the signs posted on the building.
Oh, on the building itself, it must be.
Yeah, so all of those need to get counted.
Counted.
Right. And once you include those signs that are on the building, in addition to those that are by, along the property line, I agree with Commissioner Hartley-Brown, I do think you would exceed the requirement.
Okay.
And you have to remove them.
Or remove them.
Say.
If he decides to remove anything on the building.
Oh, yeah, you will have to remove it, so I think once you look at, do that analysis, you will exceed it, and therefore you will need to eliminate those.
Yes.
And submit revised plan accordingly.
But the, sorry. It would be helpful to, when you do this signage analysis, to break it out by frontage, because that's how the maximums are calculated, and it will also make it clear to you, as well as us, the areas in which you're exceeding your required signage maximums.
And importantly, every sign that's there needs to be included in the analysis, right? And so we need an image, a drawing of each of the signs and their locations, and then there's a chart for each frontage of, that's key to the plan, that shows each of those signs and their dimensions, and adds up to less than or equal to the maximum that's permitted in the district for each frontage.
Yeah, we could provide a sample, if you, if you're.
That would be helpful, if she is.
Sure.
What is, what is the hour of operation for, currently and the proposed?
Previously was 24/7, but we proposing 6 to 6, Monday through Friday, and Saturday 6 to 3:00 p.m., and close on Monday and Sunday.
And your gas sales will remain 24/7?
Yes, it is 24/7 in gas, that's for the order repair.
So, sorry, what was Saturday hours?
6 to 3:00 p.m.
The same terms, the same approved terms that we had before.
Do you still have an open violation?
There is an open violation, I looked at it, and it is since 19, I'm sorry, 86, if I'm not mistaken, that will, we're trying to get the copy of it and resolve it, but last approval was done without, looks like, taking care of it.
It seems like an old one, it seems like 1993.
Yeah, when we filed for C of O, they're going to force us to get it anyway, resolve.
So, and then there's the issue of the fence, the approved fence was supposed to be an opaque fence, and it's not, it's a very shabby chain link fence, again, shared with residential properties, so you need to replace that fence. I think there's an, there are two fences on the site, one is this PVC stockade fence, and the other is this open chain link fence, I think the whole thing should be the PVC stockade.
Just on the residential side, right?
Oh, yeah, it's on that, whatever that, that's the north, northern property line.
Okay.
And, oh, curb cuts, so per 2005 approved plan, there were supposed to be two curb cuts on East 233rd Street, so one of the curb cuts were supposed to be removed, and that has not been removed.
Yeah, when we visited the site, prior to the, the previous approval, it used to be three, and then they proposed, they proposed two, it looks like the drivers who use the station, they just keep continuing using the three without.
You need to then.
Maybe we put a condition for replacing the curb cut, and that.
We don't work with conditions with a site that's in really bad shape like this one.
So can we, can, can the owner restore it to be three instead, which was approved previously, before 2005 approval?
So there was a reason why it was reduced to two, I'm not sure what's that.
There's a reason, we'll comply.
Why do you need, you actually have four curb cuts on this, no, five.
Five.
Why in the world would you need so many curb cuts on 20, 233rd Street?
It looks like the, just the drivers, they, they used the shortcut, the first one, which was eliminated previously, and unused, unused the.
So is there a maneuverable, maneuverability, you need to provide a maneuverable maneuverability? What she said.
Maneuverability plan.
Plan, and because we need to understand why this, why that extra curb cut is necessary, it's a lot of curb cuts on a, on very short frontage.
Okay, but we, any limit, any max? If there is any, we'll do a three?
Sorry, say again?
I need to wonder.
Is there any maximum?
Can we have three?
Can we have three?
No, I understand your request, our, my request is that we need to see how cars move on to the site, to see whether that third curb cut is necessary, because this site has a fairly narrow frontage, and you've got a lot of curb cuts in a narrow frontage. So we need to see whether the third curb cut is actually necessary, or it's just, just, I don't know, because it was eliminated for a reason at the last year.
They actually had in the previously submitted, previously approved plans, they have a maneuvering plan with two out of three curb cuts, two out of four, actually, remove, de-market, remove, if you look at the previously approved, along East 233rd Street.
Yeah.
Apparently it was four curb cuts, and they removed two of them, and there is a maneuvering plan over there, so.
Oh, they shifted one over.
Right.
There were, there were three, they removed two, added a new one in between the two.
They combined them.
Yeah, so, and that's why it's not, the current curb layout isn't working, because they didn't relocate the curb cut to be more efficient. That's, that's why it's currently not working.
That's correct, yes.
Right? So that's why the board directed the owner to, to fix the curb cut arrangement, to have less imposition on the curb, I mean, this is a pedestrian issue also, right? There's no place to walk where cars are not coming, and it's dangerous, so I think they need to do that thing, this was already considered once by the board, very carefully, because there's the diagram. Thank you, Commissioner Asheta.
One, one more thing, I'm looking at the same plan, do you have a copy of the previously?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
And, and looking at the Google image, the street view, it sounds like the, the small building, or might be called shed, used for the tire repair, was in previously existing. Was it added, like, since our previous approval?
Obviously.
No.
Yeah.
And the previous approval, it says here, dumpster. And the previous approval, it says here dumpster, but maybe that's on that, I don't know if you're looking at the same plan.
Well, they took it, they took it away.
Took it away.
Maybe, maybe I'm confused. I'm looking at this plan, and isn't it in this area here?
Look, yeah, that's what, that's what, yes.
This is where the tire repair shop?
Yes.
It's right here?
That's correct.
Okay, so, this plan doesn't show anything over there?
We assign, we tell, yeah, we tell him just to remove everything and comply with the existing.
So, that small building will be removed?
Yeah, it should be out.
Okay.
Yes.
It will be out.
Definitely. Well, yeah, he cannot get the CVO without it. He has to comply with the.
I would.
Oh, be under the tree.
This, this site came to a certain state of disrepair. We can acknowledge that.
Of course.
So, I'd like a statement as to how this condition came, and what the plan is for the future to ensure that it doesn't happen again, a business plan of how they're planning on, they're obviously still gonna, even if we close the tire repair shop, there's still going to be tires from the other repair shop. I'd like to know what, if any, plan they have to maintain this site in the future, addressing how it came into such disrepair.
I think relative to that, the question is, if the business operation of this repair, this automotive repair, has something to do with tires, like, how are they going to be handling this going forward? If they need to repair, if someone needs to be involved in tire repair, it means they need to work with someone else who's providing the tires, right? Because you don't have approval from us to do tire repair, and if you were to do tire repair, we would need to see some sort of very careful business plan, which is a new variance, by the way. So, it means you'd have to go in for a whole new ask from the beginning. And I don't know that, that the commission would be so sympathetic to this use. So, if tires become such an, are such an integral part of their business, then they have to explain what they're going to do instead, as opposed to saying, no, it'll be good, and in two months after we decide to allow this to continue, everything's back to the way it was before.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Are there any speakers on this?
No, yeah.
All right. All right, so, yeah, I think that is, all right. So, so the way that we work in situations where we have really sites that are in really bad shape, all the physical work has to be done now. So, in terms of, obviously, removing the tires and everything, and in terms of the curb cut, I think we've just said, you need to put the curb cut there. So, you need to remove the two curb cuts and put the new one in the center between. That work has to be done now. The stockade fence, PVC stockade fence has to be done now. And we need a landscape plan, that's before you actually do the landscaping. We need a plan showing what the landscaping will be like along that perimeter, in which case that work would be, so, you know, arguably, the PVC work, all right, I'm taking, when I say now, I'm taking back the immediate now. First, submit to us a landscaping plan, because when you dig up the ground for the landscaping, you're gonna be digging up the place where the stockade fence finds its foundations, its footings, right? So, all that work would be done simultaneously. So, I'd say, step one is, give us a Lumen diagram, a landscaping plan, modify the curb cuts to show what was shown on the approved plans. Do we leave anything out? Of course, take out all the tire racks.
Photos, photos.
Photos of, photos of the entire site. And in this case, in terms of the roof, someone needs to stand on a ladder and take a picture of the roof, okay? It doesn't have to be you, but it could be your client.
Sure.
What else did we say?
The signage.
Signage, right, do the signage analysis. You need to have, make sure they renew their consumer affairs license, which expired, I think, last year.
No, it is renewed, and will expire, I think, in April.
And you submit then you.
I'll submit to, I'll submit to, in April 2019.
And so, you're aware that the pavement and concrete and ass, all the paving needs to be resurfaced, but that would be done at the end of the whole process, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, those are the drawings we need.
Have an overing?
No, we don't get that.
We don't need.
We'll go with the old ones. So, two curb cuts, we'll settle on that.
Yes, so the plans need to be revised to reflect the two curb cuts. We need Lumen and landscaping drawings, and sign drawings.
And, since your professional engineer provided a drawing type of existing conditions without that illegal building existing on site, for the next submission, please have him show in dashed line the outlines for that illegal existing building.
You mean the structure?
To be removed.
To be removed, the tire shop, the tires.
It's just the symbol for removal is that.
And say, point to this entire area and say, tire racks and existing building to be entirely removed, please.
No problem.
He should have not done this existing plan. He hired, he has hidden something from us by taking this building out of the view and stamping and sealing this rule.
Well, just, yeah, just put the notes back and say, that has to be.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
And how much time will you need to work on, to submit all this?
Three weeks.
You need a landscaper also, don't forget.
Three weeks.
You're gonna get a landscaper in three weeks?
No, we'll get, we'll get it.
They have somebody already in communication, so I guess he just.
Not the one who planted those little bitty things, those little potted plants?
They have, they have. Be planted, or we're just gonna give you the analysis with the plant?
First, you're giving us drawings, but they need to be prepared by a professional landscaper, okay? Not somebody who's just, not like you, for instance. I'm just guessing you don't know landscape art.
Maybe you're a landscaper.
Okay.
I just want to make a suggestion. I think it would be best, I gather, this is the first time you're submitting a package like this. We will give you a sample package where you will know the extent of the detail that we need for landscaping plan, kind of information we need for signage plan, the Lumen diagrams, all the specs of the lights, all of those, so that you know what you have to prepare.
I do think we need a shorter date, because of planting season, and we don't want them to miss that window.
Well, planting goes on all the way until October.
Right. That portion is sloped, so we'll work it out with the landscaper.
Yeah, yes.
So, how about four weeks?
Okay, fine.
That would be a submission by April 17th, for a continued hearing on May 7.
We.
May 7?
Or May 7?
May 7th hearing, April 17th submission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think you did it right, you did it right. All right. Item number 10 to 7109 BZ 13240, Metropolitan Avenue, Queens. Raise your hand, it doesn't have to be in a, it doesn't have to be in a juror.
It's automatic.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Frank Sanchak, Ackerman, LLP, for the applicant. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We attended yesterday's review session, and understood that there was a question relating to a certificate for massage services. We submitted a revised statement of facts and plans yesterday, indicating that the Black Card Spa and the Planet Fitness does not employ any staff for massages, so there's no massage license necessary here. So, we believe that that addresses that issue.
That was our only open question, thank you. Are there any speakers on that? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Add a motion to grant, sorry.
Tony?
No, I just wanted to put that aside. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, continued hearing, item numbers, item number 11 to 6315 BZ 4547, Little Corvair Road, Staten Island. Is that a juror request?
Yeah, they want six to eight weeks, and they understand that you're sending a dismissal warning, and they're working with the owner on the pending redesign.
And your name for the record?
Elise Fullader.
Thank you very much. So, six to eight weeks for submission? Yeah?
Uh, yep.
Two, three, four, five, six. So, the outside of that would be. So, I just want to say, though, this has been adjourned twice. The last time we heard it is August. I don't, if we adjourn it again, it's gonna be the end, right?
They understand that.
So, in other words, there is no adjournment, it's a dismissal warning, right? So, you need to make sure that six to eight weeks is enough time. So, if that's gonna have anybody working faster than is reasonable, then I would recommend more time, because.
Okay, they, they, it says that they're flexible with your schedule, so it can be a little.
Eight weeks?
Yeah, at least eight.
Okay, so eight weeks would be a submission, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, May 15th, for a hearing on June 4.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 12.
Sorry, and so, counsel has a note that.
Yes, we're consenting a dismissal.
With certified mail.
Certified regular mail, yes.
Yes.
Item number 12, 20164217 BZ 1665, Bartow Avenue of the Bronx. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, and to respond honestly to board member questions? Please sign.
Good morning, Eugene Pillman, for the applicant. There's a threshold issue of continuous use, which we would like to address, and then we'll discuss our decision to propose the car wash, despite prior statements too.
And despite what we just said yesterday at the hearing?
Well, I, we will get into it, and we'll explain our decision. But the threshold issue is continuous use. So, the BSA grant expired in September 29, 2008, and the current owner purchased the gas station on September 1, 2010. As such, an inquiry for business records, such as receipts, or anything prior to the purchase, is non-existent, because it was a different owner. As such, we contacted the seller, the seller attorney, Mr. Robert Garner, and he provided an affidavit stating that the site was open on March 8, 2009. And subsequent to that, we have plenty of receipts, et cetera, that we provided, showing the use, which include consumer affairs reports, receipts. It's Exhibit 25 in the February submission. So, there's an extensive litany of receipts.
That go from which date?
Beginning in the February 2011.
Right, that's not what the conversation was, it was prior to, right?
The conversation is giving us more information for that two and a half year gap that's covered only by the affidavit. So, if you're saying that your person purchased on September 1, 2010, that actually puts you right before the end of the window, the two-year window between the expiration of the previous grant and two years. Do you have anything from September 1 that shows that you were actually in business?
So, the prior owner stayed on after the, after the purchase. There was a, there was a court action that we could inquire into.
When he stayed on, was he operating this business?
Yeah, that's what we need.
Yeah, it has to be. Proof of operation.
And this might not be very hard, because if they are operating the same business, they generally have the same, they're usually, they're same, the only thing that changes is the owner. They're using the same context that they had before. So, it may not be too hard, especially when going to, like, third-party providers and asking for prior, prior evidence of use.
We will inquire into additional documentation. There may have been a lease after the purchase sale, which allowed the prior owner to continue operating that we're searching for, and there was a court action, I believe, to a victim after a probate sale, which we will also, which we will also require, but we do believe that.
You say a probate sale?
So, the previous owner, there was a dispute between family members as to who controls the gas station. So, as such, the sale and possession took some time to actualize after the.
There are probably also other governmental records that you can call upon or get, that even if it is regarding the prior operation, the prior owner's operation, will still be available for public consumption. You should look there. For instance, you do have certificates of inspection from DCA that you probably will still have if the.
If we do a full request with consumer affairs.
I'm sure there are fire inspection records that are public records that you could look at, where they inspected the site for safety and operation of fire-stopping materials and equipment.
We will do that. We will, we will conduct additional research, because it's crucial to us to maintain the gasoline sales at the site, you know, regardless of the accessory use, which I do want to get into. Much has been said about this car wash, and after consulting with our client for a great deal of time, he is financially unable to execute the conversion, because at the time of sale, he spent, I believe, several hundred thousand dollars, and he could verify the numbers, to install it, mortgaged another property to get it. But it turns out that permits were required, even though it was installation of equipment. He received a stop work order, and he's been in limbo ever since. But the cost to convert this existing laundromat to a convenience store, for example, would be also in the hundreds of thousands. So, as such, he's left with a situation where he's unable to financially effectuate a change of use from that which is already installed.
Well, it's unfortunate for him, because this is an illegal use that did not get any approvals. It's not like the owner got an approval from DOB and then followed through, installed it, only to have DOB pull back the approval. This is an illegal use that was added on without any authorization from any government agency. So, you then can't claim hardship to us that, oh, well, we spent the money, and now we can't use it, we really feel bad, and we can't convert it back. That's not really the board's issue or problem.
You could take that to some absurd conclusions, based on what you're arguing. You know, I opened any number of illegal uses, and now it's though, you know, I opened up a gambling den, or worse, right? And now I can't afford to turn it into something wholesome, right? So.
But that's our situation. We hear your position. I guess we have to go back and run the numbers, see what we could do with the store, perhaps convert it back to repair base. But we would also like to inquire whether any mitigation measures might make the car wash more palpable, such as extending the building, creating a longer drive train.
You don't have lot area to do that. The comment I made yesterday, that this is a very intensive use on a relatively small lot, it's roughly, what, 8,000 square feet, 7,500 square feet, that it's just too small to have all of these uses and in close proximity to the residential.
All right, we understand your board's position. We have to go back and pull up some more historic documents to keep this gas station, and we will reconsider, and urge our client to seek a use that could be, that we can make work of this site.
But please don't come back with drawings for another laundromat.
No, no, we're not, we're not gonna come back for another car wash.
Okay, okay.
Well, we're gonna pursue a convenience store, I believe.
Okay.
That might be more in line.
What'd you say?
Nothing, I was saying that might be more in line, but I'd like to see it first.
Right, well, obviously, there's the planning of the convenience store, but that's more typically associated with a gas station, even on a small site like this one, right? I mean, car washes are legend for the difficulties they impose on neighborhoods, even non-residential neighborhoods. Car washes in commercial neighborhoods impose quite a lot of traffic issues, right? So.
I understand, but, yes, so we'll, we'll find additional documentation to close the September 2008 till March 2011 gap, and we're gonna revise the plans to propose a different use, because it seems where the roads end with the, with the car wash.
Great. So, it's 2008 until 2010 is what we need to do, right?
2011. Yeah.
February 2011 to September 29, 2008. We only have the affidavit to gap those two together, so we're going to supplement that, you know, we have good reason to believe that it was operational at some points within that period.
So, um, and, yeah, and to, I, I just want to reiterate to the point, public records, but also that continuity of suppliers.
Yep.
It's, it seems to me, and the suppliers, it's not that long ago, the suppliers may well have records still, right?
We're going to inquire, we'll do our due diligence.
Okay. All right, um, are there any speakers on this? This fire department, no? Okay, um, so how much time?
Approximately two months.
Two months? That is, uh, that would be a submission, uh, May 15th for hearing on June 4th.
Thank you, that's great.
Great.
Repeat that again, I'm sorry?
May 15 submission for June 4th hearing.
Okay, great, thank you. Item number 13, 2016-4273BZ, 669 Second Avenue, Manhattan. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board interrupts, respond honestly to board member questions. Ed, are you going to speak?
Yes.
Arthur, you need to swear in, thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, we have to sign.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Calvin Wong from Acreman on behalf of the applicant. First, we'd like to express our gratitude for the board's patience in this application. Since this application was filed and since the time of the last hearing, we've diligently still going through records regardless of our last submission. Today, we also have brought the applicant of record for the signed application who was in attendance of, of the meeting with Commissioner Santuli on October 29, 2015.
Sorry, wait a second, there's too much noise, sorry.
Do we need to turn off the air?
Yeah, sorry.
I tried to get some warmth in here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, it's just, it's really loud.
I know. Just the white switch down.
Thank you.
I know, but it's-
Much better. Uh, what I've handed up to the board was one of the-
Sorry, can you restate your name? I'm not sure if anything's heard it.
Sure.
Start all over.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Calvin Wong from Acreman LLP on behalf of the applicant. Since the time of the board's last hearing, we've continued to search through our records, the applicant's records, and the architect's records in response to some of the board's remaining concerns, most notably the location of the relocated sign. What I've handed to the board is a, an approved plan stamped approved by the DOB on June 3, 2008. This is about four months prior to the meeting with Commissioner Santuli and filed under the signed structure permit, application number 110179912. As Mr. Loria will state, this is one of the plans that Commissioner Santuli also had at that meeting. I'm going to allow Mr. Loria to speak, if that's okay.
Wasn't this submitted already into the records, it's drawn?
I don't believe so.
Has it been electronically submitted?
It is not, so we received this, this past weekend, so I have to scan it in and digitize it for the board and for submission.
Have you ever seen a structural plan like that?
There was a structural plan, but I'm not sure that showed, this one has the location of the sign at its currently present location and was stamped approved prior to the meeting with Commissioner Santuli.
And, and you're saying that this was placed before him at this-
Yes, but I'm going to allow Mr. Loria, who was in attendance at that meeting, to-
To testify to that?
Correct.
Edward Loria.
Hi.
Hi.
And? Do you have something you want to say?
Well, I have a lot to say, to tell you the truth.
Okay, so let's hear, you submitted some drawings, what do the drawings show?
Well, I didn't submit those drawings.
Oh, who submitted the drawings? Mr. Wong submitted the drawings.
However, I can explain, I can explain the scenario of this sign.
Were you, were you here, were you at this meeting, this alleged meeting in 2008?
You mean with Commissioner Santuli?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you know that this was placed before him on that meeting?
Yes, and in fact, the plans that are part of the reconsideration that he signed indicate that plan don't have, they do not have that plan, but they refer to that plan application as the structure being filed on that application. I don't know if you have those plans that were submitted with the reconsideration. I have them with me if you want to see them.
Can you please, can you, can you please provide, do you have copies of the plans that were, that were provided to Commissioner Santuli?
Yes.
The sign being placed in this location?
Yes.
Can you please share them with the board? I don't know that we have that.
I just, I, I just want to ask part of the, uh, March 27, 2018, this plan was submitted in parts, and it does include, it's a sign stamped, the same document that was submitted, and it has a site plan, uh-
On page number eight.
Do you repeat what the submission date was?
March 27, 2018. That was part of the initial submission that was made, and, and basically, it's the same drawing that's been broken up into several sheets.
Okay.
And it does include, it's the same drawing because everything-
It's just been broken up?
It's broken up into several parts.
Yes, it, it does include the same, the same components, and I, I remember I have looked at the, yeah, structural things of that, I experienced concerns regarding the structural stability of that, of the sign structure, and it's on page eight of 13 of the PDF.
Of that same date submission?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, this isn't new?
You want to go on?
No, this is not new.
This is not new?
No, it's not new, it was submitted, but I'm a little confused about then the testimony, so we were given and focused on a site plan that was submitted, and so is there an indication that that, those March 27 drawings were submitted to Commissioner Santuli? Santuli? Like, how do we know these were submitted to Santuli?
I think that's why Mr. Loria is here.
Right, so that's the thing, so we don't have so far anything that indicates that this is what Commissioner Santuli saw. That, that's what the whole issue is, right?
Correct, and that is why we, we brought Mr. Loria. I apologize, I did not think that that was part of our previous submission, but I'll let Mr. Loria.
I'm sorry, but I was not party to the previous discussions on this case. I only found out about it the end of last week, that's why I was brought in today. I prepared some documents that, uh-
So, I, I'm sorry, I'm very lost, were you the, were you the architect of record?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, but these drawings are signed by Scott Lewis?
That's not my application, that isn't the application that was granted the reconsideration.
So, then what do these drawings have to do with anything?
Because on the application that was granted the reconsideration, these drawings were referred to, and he, Mr. Santuli reviewed these drawings also at the same time before he approved the reconsideration.
Sorry, as the architect of record, didn't you have to provide, I remember working with Santuli, I wouldn't have been able to sit there in the room if I hadn't done the drawings. The person who did the drawings had to sit there in the room.
I think what he's saying is he did the drawings that were the subject of the reconsideration, but the reconsideration referred to these drawings, so these were also before Santuli and the DOB.
Absolutely, yes, that's correct.
But wait a second, but one set of drawings showed one thing and another set showed another thing?
Well, there were many sets of drawings that showed many, many different things, in fact, I think about six or seven tax lots were referred throughout all this process because everybody considered one zoning lot, so it didn't matter where we put it on the lot. That was the, that was the contention at the time.
So, here's the part that's the problem. If Santuli was so confused that he didn't know what he was looking at, he didn't answer-
No, 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 he was not confused at all, he was not confused at all, he knew exactly what he was doing.
What was he doing?
He knew that, he knew that there was a sign on a building at, on Lot 28. He also knew that the Board of Standards Appeals approved a sign to be relocated to a new building that was to be constructed on another lot, Lot 34. He knew that we, demolishing the building on Lot 28 and we're going to build a sign, and he said, okay, the sign that was originally there and the sign that was approved by the Board of Standards Appeals to be relocated was much more defensive, offensive than what you intend to do because we tend to lower it down. So, we, he said, it's okay to accept it as replacing the exist, the sign that existed, non-comforming sign that existed, as long as it's being lowered down.
But wait a second, you're the architect of record and you came with drawings as well?
The engineer of record, I hate to-
Oh, so you're, I'm sorry, you're an engineer.
That's okay.
You were the engineer of record and you came with your own drawings as well, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
What did your drawings show?
My drawings showed the relocation of the sign.
Where?
Did you say you had a copy of the drawings?
Yes.
Provided, can you?
Well, I mean, I have a complete submission here, but, but I don't know if you want to go through the whole thing.
Look, we have been relying on a set of drawings that show the sign on Lot-
20, uh, 20.
Lot 28.
I believe, just to clarify, and, and, Mr. Loria, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're saying is that at the meeting, Commissioner Santuli was presented a number of options, all of which the sign was in a more southerly position and lower than the original sign, and at that meeting, Mr. Loria, uh, he was okay with any of those scenarios being that they were substantially lower.
Sorry, isn't the testimony supposed to come from the person who's the fact witness?
Uh, yes, this is, this is kind of, this is-
Normally in court, I think that would be called something like leading the witness?
I have a very, I'm very sorry that I did not submit this.
You need to stand in front of the mic.
Can you bring several of those copies up and-
I have a bunch of them.
And share them with the board members?
And if, and when you speak, please stand in front of the microphone or we do not pick up your voice in the recordings.
Thank you.
Just disregard the top picture.
It's just Times Square.
You remember this meeting from roughly 10 years ago?
Say that again?
I'm, I'm just looking at the date, roughly 10 years, I, I know you to be a busy engineer, and if you remember-
That's true.
You remember this?
But there are many reconsiderations I need to, to ask for or get, so I kind of remember them.
So, could you tell us what we're looking at?
All right, well, the top picture really has nothing to do with this case, it's just a, to put this picture in a concept, it's a picture of Times Square, and in, in the front of it, you see the Sony sign.
We see the what, Sony?
Sony.
The Sony sign, okay.
And about 40 years ago, I filed an application in the building department, and I believe here also, to put a sign there, and at that time, no signs were, advertising signs were permitted in Times Square, so it was denied. Now, look at it, such a vast change in, in what's permitted and not permitted.
True, the zoning changed.
The zoning changed, indeed, well, Hudson Yards also, couldn't build anything there, and now, now look at it. So, what we're really looking at here is a miniscule movement of-
Sorry, what's this have to do with anything?
No, it just put the whole picture in concept of what-
I think we should move on from this.
Yeah, yeah.
Has nothing to do, has nothing to do with this case.
Right, in any way.
In any way, except it, it shows that big changes can be made.
True, when city planning decides to rezone your site, we can have another conversation.
And the public is the one that's affected, city planning is doing it for the benefit of the public. In this case, I have a letter there I prepared, and it shows, I've highlighted all the tax lots that have been included in all the different applications from here, from the beginning of this sign's history. However, at the bottom of the first page is the, is the controlling paragraph, you don't have to go through all of it, it's an auto-ashley, but you can keep it as a record. It says, "The reconsideration was granted filed on Lot 25." The application for the reconsideration was filed on Lot 25, allowing the relocation based on the fact that the sign was to be much lower than the original sign. That was proposed by the, that was originally proposed by the P S, BSA grant on Lot 34 and the old sign on Lot 28, and he had full knowledge of application number 110719912 where the sign was shown to be built on Lot 26 and 27 where it actually was built. So, the concept is, all along, everybody was considering this one zoning lot, so whether we're moving it up or down or where, as long as it had beneficial, it did not increase the degree of non-compliance, that was what Commissioner Santuli was concerned about.
Did, did Commissioner Santuli realize that it was a double-faced sign?
I don't remember.
That you don't remember?
I don't remember.
Because that increases the degree of non-compliance, by the way, illumination-wise, and there's more sign.
Mm-hmm.
Who faces? That, that I don't really know.
In addition to this, as far as I understand, it was a board grant before that reconsideration, mentioning that the sign should be placed where it was before, more or less.
No, 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 no.
Let's, let me just go back and reiterate, the board grant really has nothing to do with this sign. The, the board grant had to do with allowing a building to be constructed on the vacant lot, right? And the board grant acknowledged simply that there's a sign on the vacant lot, or not on the vacant lot, it's on the side of a building, and that the sign would need to be relocated, so what the board just did was say, um, not even say, it allowed the drawings to indicate a sign on the face of the new building facing the tunnel, right? Or the, the underpass.
Another lot.
Right, but it didn't, the board didn't opine about the sign, it simply allowed the drawings to indicate the sign because it was not giving a grant to allow a sign to continue. It is just, the sign's indicated, if DOB is good with it, fine, right? So, there was no variance or anything to allow a sign.
Yeah, I understand.
And so, the, so there, so DOB's decision to allow the sign to go someplace else on the lot while the building was under construction or while the site is completely vacant is a completely separate situat, case from the board's grant of a building to be located eventually someday on the vacant lot. Okay, so we really need to separate that because the board did not regulate where the sign was going to go.
Didn't the applicant need to come back to the board before?
No, no, the board was not regulating the location of the sign. The board was giving certain floor area and height and setback waivers to a new building to be constructed on a site that, that where the owners argued the site was hampered by all sorts of unique physical conditions, right? That's it, the sign was not a part of the board grant, okay? So, this is completely, what did the DOB see? What did they decide, and did they decide something upon which the owner relied to their detriment? That's really what-
Had a good faith relying to their detriment.
Yeah, well, that's the good faith.
Right, because on this sign, uh, in response to counsel's question of whether or not he knew it was illuminated sign, it does say on the first, it says double-sided grandfather illuminated double-faced advertising sign, and which, I don't believe it's grandfathered, it would have been-
That's a lot of, that's conclusory, I, I would say.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's professionally certified, too.
So, that's-
And not by the person standing in front of us.
And it raises another question of, even if this was before him, is that, would that be a good faith reliance on something that isn't exactly accurate?
Well, for the first part is to say it doesn't increase the degree of non-compliance is not, not true.
Well, he's saying where the plan submitted to DOB- Well, he's saying where the plan submitted to DOB didn't highlight that fact, or even kind of, kind of quashed that notion by saying it was grandfathered, illuminated, double-faced. Is that reasonable for them to have relied on approval based on something that was maybe not entirely correct?
And it's self-certified.
Which, I think it goes more to that same question. This is a reliance that the owner put forward, something for the board to, for the department to rely on, which isn't exactly accurate.
Which goes to clean hands, is what you're saying, is that if, if the applicant is withholding some information that would have affected the determination, then is that a good faith reliance case?
Right.
And I think we can go maybe a step further from withholding because of what that statement says.
Well, but, so, not withholding, it's putting forth as true something that's not necessarily true.
Right.
Right. But the part that's quite confusing is, the engineer concludes that it's grandfathered, but there's this meeting with Santuli to find out whether they qualified for grandfathering. It's a little confusing to me, the sequence. So, we don't actually know that, how do we know that this was, you know, happily, DOB has changed its practices. Now, they attach the, all the documents that were considered in the reconsideration. Now, it's, these things just float around, like the date of these drawings, 5/12/18. What's the date of the Santuli recon?
October 20th.
So...
October 20th.
October 20th. So, these drawings were done, so that's the other part that's confusing. October 20th, 2008?
Yes.
So, something's really out of sequence here, right? This is approved in August. August 3rd, wait a minute, 2000...
Eight.
2000, oh, sorry, September?
Nine three.
Nine three, 2008, so September.
Wait, that's backwards.
Is it August 3rd?
I believe it's June, June 3rd, 2008, because it's backwards.
June 3rd?
So, was it professionally certified, submitted, and then audited? And then the audit led to the reconsideration meeting?
It could be. I think, I submitted a copy of the DOB printout from that application, so it should say what it was ordered and not a...
So, it's a perforated set of drawings that are self-certified prior to the Santuli meeting. So, that's a, what is Santuli looking at, a set of drawings that are approved, even though the question before him is, is this grandfathered, right?
Does Santuli know it's only, the original sign was one-sided?
Right, does he know that it was a one-sided sign?
Speak up, we can't hear you. In this, it looks like this is the reconsideration.
It is, and if you look at my Exhibit D...
Sorry, Mr. Loria.
It says on the second page, advertising sign, both sides. I don't know. But it's attached to this that he just gave us.
Oh, this is in there?
Exhibit D, you're looking at my Exhibit D, is that correct?
Right.
That explains what Santuli had.
No, not Exhibit D.
I think so.
But you, you also stated earlier that Commissioner Santuli knew that BSA approved relocating the sign to another lot. Is that what had been conveyed to him at the meeting?
Was, if you look at my Exhibit D...
The last page is...
The last page shows what the board approved, and Sant, Mr. Santuli had that.
Right, so at the meeting, you had explained to him that the advertising sign had been approved by BSA to be relocated.
If the new building was built, yes.
But that wasn't something, please, I can carry on.
What? Say that, say that.
If you read that paragraph in nature of request, that is made in Exhibit D, it states, "Request reconsiderations of objections 14 and 16 based on grandfather application and BSA letter allowing sign relocation at this site."
So, I would also direct you to the approved, the letter of substantial compliance approved plans that state that Board of Standards and Appeals, calendar number 28001bz, are approved only for arrangement and design, not as being in substantial compliance with, but waiving no requirements of the board's resolution. So, as we've sort of been discussing, the board never approved anything with respect to an advertising sign. But if you were sitting in the meeting representing to Commissioner Santuli that the board had approved relocation of an advertising sign, that's a problem.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
No, what I presented to Commissioner Santuli is what you have in my Exhibit D. And it shows that the Board of Standards and Appeals approved drawing, and it stands, Board of Standards and Appeals copy approved, shows the sign to be relocated in that location, whether it approved it or not. The drawing showed that.
Your cover letter with the reconsideration states, as Commissioner Chibeta just pointed out, "BSA letter allowing sign relocation at this site. However, the board never granted a variance with respect to the definition of surface area, or the location, or any other provision with respect to signage." And so, signage wasn't part of the variance application.
Then both Commissioner Santuli and I misunderstood this drawing.
And that's, and that's really, that's a very, that's a very telling point. There's a big misunderstanding here. I don't think, I think we can rely, we can rest on that.
But I mean, he relied on this drawing, which was stamped approved by the Board of Standards and Appeals. And he relied on, if you look at my Exhibit D, the other pages, he relied on the application filed for the structure, which showed it on the other lots. So, he had proof.
I would also note that at the end of the resolution, it states, this is for calendar number 28001bz, that the approved plan shall be considered approved only for the portions related to this specific relief granted. And at the beginning, the very first whereas clause specifically talks about section 32421 of the zoning, 33283, 3563A, and 23652ZR, 2605ZR, 13134ZR, 2605ZR, and 36682ZR. And that, in these provisions that the board waived with the variance application, none of those relate to advertising signs.
But I want to add to that, even if, let's just say for argument's sake, even if people were under the impression that somehow the board and the sign were related to each other, it says, "Advertising sign relocated to corner of 37th Street." Well, the subject location is 36th Street. So, where does the board get to 36th Street in this conversation?
That's my contention all along. There are so many, if you notice my letter that I submitted, how many lots I've highlighted, how many different lots have been referred to in all the different applications that were filed, for all the different matters that were brought. And where it was really being put, as long as it was being put on the owner's property...
No, you didn't answer my question. The, the, the plan, that's the BSA plan, says in the upper right-hand corner, pointing to the location of the future sign...
Right.
That will be on the building...
Right.
Says, "Advertising sign relocated to corner of 37th Street."
37th, okay.
Right, 37th Street, which is right above where the underpass is, or the cut-through, right?
Oh.
How does anyone get from that sign to 36th Street, which is the location of this...
The opposite corner.
The opposite corner.
You have my overall plan that I submitted just now, which shows all the lots concerned.
But, wait, wait, wait.
But it's like, it's like...
Corner, sorry.
It's, I'm sorry. This is like, you're trying to get the area rectangle using integration. It's very clear here. It says the corner of 37th. Now, the location that the sign is at is the corner of 36th.
Right.
Why this, why should be you confused with the lot numbers and the block? It's very simple.
What happened was, the sign was on the building that was demolished.
Yes.
And when, when the case was brought before the board to build a new building, it relocated the sign from that location, which I show on this plan, the original location, the sign, to the corner of 37th Street, but that building was never built.
Okay, so good faith reliance requires diligence on the side of the applicant. It requires someone acting, it requires someone acting with the utmost care, who, for no reason of fault due to their own, not something they could have captured, or something they misunderstood, or something that is as big as a mistake as a full, as a full block or a full lot. They fell victim to this type of reliance, and they shouldn't be punished for it. This, to me, it seems like there's a bit, a lot of signs here, a lot of things that, that, that a diligent person acting in good faith would have picked up on before relying on, if, if, if the commissioners did state that, before relying on that. That's just my position.
I don't, I don't quite understand.
I, well, for one, I don't understand your argument at all. If you're saying Santuli, Commissioner Santuli relied on the BSA drawing, which is what he says...
Only partially, only partially.
Well, he doesn't say, "I partially relied on." He says, "Request reconsideration based on grandfather application, copy enclosed," so I'm not sure if we know what that is, "and BSA letter allowing sign relocation at this site. Note, the sign is substantially in the same location as originally, substantially the same location as originally, but lower in height." So, the, so the focus is on lower in height. He doesn't say, "Note, the sign is on a building three lots away from the proposed location, and it's okay to move to the corner of 36th Street, which is not the corner of 37th Street, as it says on the BSA drawing." I don't know how to make a leap there. And to say he was, you know, a lot of plans were thrown at him during the meeting, and he concluded based on lots of plans, that the one that is not your plan, because you're the engineer of record, I'm so totally confused. There should be a drawing that you provided that's signed and sealed. Otherwise, this engineer should have been the one who appears at the reconsideration meeting to discuss why his self-certified perforated drawing that was prepared before this recon is, is the one that will stand. So, I'm, I'm missing...
But I thought you said that there was a set of drawings that you, that you provided to Commissioner Santuli that was part of the submission you...
Yes, that's my, that's my Exhibit D.
Exhibit D.
That's this, but this is just a sketch.
That's the recon, plus the plans that we submitted.
Which one is your?
All of them.
Oh, wait.
Advertising sign. But these are only partial drawings. So, what did you submit to DOB?
This was...
To get an approval?
This was submitted to the DOB.
Just these two, just these three pages?
I think there were...
These three pages were submitted for...
I think, I think there were a couple more pages, but I didn't bring them because I didn't feel they were relevant. They didn't, they didn't tell you anything as to where the sign...
The way a recon works is, you go to, you know you're going to have an objection, or maybe you're anticipating an objection because it's not clear, and the plan examiner is, I don't know, it's not, I just can't do this. You have to go to the commissioner, right? So, you go to the commissioner, and you make a few, you make an argument, right? But then, you have to go to DOB, to the, back to the plan examiner, with your drawings signed and sealed, that are then the approved set. Where is the set that was ultimately approved?
Well, if you look at page two of my Exhibit D, it's signed by Gino Topino, who still is a plan examiner in the building department. So, he approved this plan.
Okay, but where's the rest? Where does it locate? I don't see the site plan.
So, you're back to square one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems, what you submitted was the, the sign that was more for structural file, that was a structural drawing file that was submitted for, to Commissioner Santuli. And then, and then associated with that was the BSA plan that indicated that the advertising sign was going to be relocated. And you were connecting the dots, saying, so therefore...
Same one.
That anywhere it should be permitted, and, and that we allowed it, that we, meaning BSA, approved a two-faced sign?
No, no, I didn't, I never said that.
No, but, no, no, I'm not saying you said that, but that's kind of the assumption that I would think Commissioner Santuli was led to. I'm not, I'm very confused.
So, let me go back again, just for argument's sake. Say Santuli looked at everything that you said, right? This little sketch?
Which he did, yes.
All right, well, and this, and so on. If you're the engineer of record, where are the drawings that you filed with DOB to get the approval for the sign? So, are, did, were you, did you supersede this guy, Scott Lewis?
No.
So, then, did Scott Lewis supersede you?
No.
So, then, I don't understand how you're the ar, engineer of record, and Scott Lewis is the engineer of record for the identical sign in maybe different or the same places.
Well, he, he prepared the structural drawings. I didn't do the structural drawings. I did the zoning part of the application.
Okay, where are your drawings?
I'm sorry, I only brought part of them. I didn't realize you'd like to see the entire set.
Okay, so here's the thing, is, you know, Mr. Wong, I don't even understand this. We gave you all this time to come up with additional information and submit it in time for the board to review it. And what you're doing is, you're asking us to figure all of this out with an incomplete submission, where you didn't bother to give us a complete set of drawings. I'm a little annoyed.
I apologize. I had not seen this submission until just now.
Well, so that's even more confusing.
Yeah, you brought Mr. Loria here, but you didn't, you didn't choose to look at what he was presenting. He could have presented things that were completely blown up your case. You understand that.
Which he...
Which he arguably did.
Which is the site plan mainly. I'm not sure why we're looking at this, an elevation for the sign, and, and this, a piece of structural drawing.
And associated with that is the BSA plan.
And this, which is, which is, we have it. This is, this is in our records.
And he just acknowledged that this isn't the complete...
The entire debate on this case is about the location, and I'm not sure why we don't have a site plan that could flip this case upside down today, if it exists.
It seems to me that since the beginning, there's always been an issue of connecting the Santuli recon to the current position and size and double-faced illuminated nature of the existing sign as we know it now. And there has been nothing given to us that really wraps that up with a bow in terms of connecting Santuli to what is actually there now. It just doesn't, and we've given them plenty of time.
We have.
I don't know how much longer we should be giving them at this point. And these are the same sets of documents that has been submitted previously, just in a different package, but it has not shed any new light.
We may have quite the opposite. We may have something that says it's supposed to be on 37th Street, as opposed to, you know...
No, yeah, but we already knew about that. We, there is not one document here that we don't already have, right?
We've also gotten additional testimony today about a little bit for what was said at the meeting, and maybe what was represented to the commissioner.
And I think that further affirms the fact that there was confusion all along in terms of...
I don't, right.
No, sorry.
Is it your thought?
I didn't want him to interrupt, sorry. There was a mischaracterization, it seems, of the information that has been submitted to Commissioner Santuli, especially with the way the BSA document has been submitted. So, I remain unconvinced as to how the decision Commissioner Santuli could have been, could have made was made with all the correct set of information.
And certainly, those facts wouldn't permit a good faith reliance.
Probably the opposite.
But you don't get good faith reliance under these types of conditions.
Of confusion, mass confusion, lots of documents thrown at us. By the way, we're used to getting lots of documents thrown at us in an attempt to confuse us and to come out with a, a response that is not relying on the facts, right? So, I think we've had enough, right?
One final thing.
Yes.
Can you please take a look at this?
Sure. Yes.
Did you take this to the meeting with the commissioner, with Commissioner Santuli?
He had this record. It was filed in the Building Department.
Did you take it to the meeting?
He had it.
And he looked at it in front of you?
He had it. I didn't bring it. He had it.
He looked at it at the meeting.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, I again apologize for the confusion. I was somewhat blindsided this morning as well. And we're okay with the board closing this application if we could submit one additional thing in writing.
No. So, here's the thing, and I'm quite disturbed by how you... So here's the thing, and I'm quite disturbed by how you've been managing this case, right? You, at the last hearing, we said, we've had enough, we've looked at all the documents, you've submitted everything, there doesn't seem to be anything more on the record, right? You said, "Please give me more time to research." And we said, "Okay, you can have a little more time to research." You had the more time, we scheduled a hearing, nothing was submitted except for you standing on the existing record. And then you come here and you say, "Oh, look, I have all this new information," which isn't new information, because all of this already exists on the record. The only thing that you did is have Mr. Luria come and testify, which further proved the confusion that was sown at the hearing that we surmised, at the meeting with Santuli, that we surmised on our own. And so, and I think that if you're preparing for a hearing, you need to prepare, and you can't come here and throw things at us and essentially try to blow up the entire thing with information we already have. So I think we've looked at this long enough, I don't know, how many hearings have we had? Four? You had plenty of time to bring Mr. Luria to go to his office to research his records. You knew he was the engineer of record on this project. I'm surprised that you didn't do that previously.
He came to you.
Yes, because, and how many hearings? Four?
Two adjournments started on... First hearing was held in May.
Right, just one adjournment. Last time was not an adjournment.
Right, last time was not an adjournment. There's been plenty of opportunity to be heard, and we knew that Mr. Luria was the engineer of record from the get-go, and I'm sure you obtained this information from him, and so enough already. So I'd like to make... Are there any speakers on this?
May I make one comment?
Yes.
Just one comment. Mrs. Santuli was not confused at all. He knew exactly what was happening.
Well, that doesn't seem...
If you look at the Google Earth picture I presented...
Yes, we've seen plenty.
It shows where the sign is, and no matter where you move it on the lot, it's still the same sign.
That's not the... For one, it's not the same sign, because it's a double-faced illuminated sign that...
Double face, I don't know anything about.
Increases the degree of non-compliance, which was one of the conditions that Santuli had on his recon. And then the other is, it's not on Lot 25 or 26, whatever it says on that application. It's on a completely different tax lot. So there are so many, Lot 25, so there are so many issues that point to the fact that Commissioner Santuli was unaware of the actual location that the sign was going to be placed on. We don't know what kind of value that engineering drawing was, had, because it was self-certified. He might have looked at that, and he might have said at the meeting, "That's not even on the same lot as the original sign." And so, we want it to be just dropped down on the same lot as the building that will be demolished. We don't know that he didn't say that. We don't know what he said, because his recon indicates that all that's happening is, it's in substantially the same location, only lower.
Correct.
Right? He didn't say substantially the same location, only on the other corner of the zoning lot. He doesn't say that. But he does bother to say that it will only be lower. So that points to him thinking it's just dropping down, which is a conversation we had a year ago, so we don't need to have it again. All right. Are there any speakers?
And they also acknowledged that there was a misunderstanding at that meeting. That was acknowledged a few moments ago.
A misunderstanding regarding the import of the BSA.
Right, yes, right. And I'm saying, okay, let's say he accepted that the BSA gave direction. It gave direction to put the sign on the other corner of the zoning lot. So how does it get all the way over here?
And it's not just the word substantial. He mentioned Lot 25, whereas the sign is on 26 and 27.
So he says Lot 25.
It's very clear that it's totally different place.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just want to say...
Lot, the different files.
Is it actually in the same location, but much lower? On Lot 25, you mean up here?
Yeah, up there.
It said, yeah, this is an application as to Lot 25, right?
Actually, there was tremendous confusion about lot numbers.
Okay.
And that's another, and that's more to the...
Right, but also in his...
That's more to my point.
In his last sentence, he says, "and makes a lesser impact on the community." You cannot look at the sign as it is existing now and come to the conclusion that that is a lesser impact when it's two-sided illumination.
Okay, right. Okay, I think we've done this enough. So is there... Are there any speakers on this? All right, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
No.
Vice Chair Chanda?
No.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
No.
Commissioner Sheta?
No.
Commissioner Shabetta?
No.
This application has been denied.
Thank you.
So we're going to take a 10-minute break.
10-minute break. Back at 12:46.
I just have an adjournment next to me. Just do the adjournment.
Ooh, sorry, Ms. Ma. We have to take breaks every two hours. So we'll be back in 10 minutes. Promise.
Yes. She's been going for a while. Hmm? I can't. I can't. It's good. You're my strength. My capital. Way to go on that. That was crazy. It was bananas.
Okay, back on the record. Let me just check. Sure. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the record. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for March 19, 2019. This is the continued hearings. Items on the zoning calendar, we are now proceed with item number 14, 2016, 4469BZ, 4923, Story Boulevard, Queens.
Good afternoon. Matthew Schomer, David F. Hutcherson, Citron. We're just requesting an adjournment.
How much time do you need?
If we could do the... There's no hearing on the 15th, but there's... May 15th is the hearing, and May 22nd. That one would be great for us, if that's possible.
There's one on May 21st.
Sorry, May 21st, yeah.
So that would be a submission on May 1st.
Perfect.
Okay, May 1st hearing, continue hearing May 21st.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Item number 15, 2017, 247BZ, 1367 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. You're going to raise your right hands? Oh, you're going to come back? Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Board? Respond honestly to the Board without any questions. Okay, sorry. Done with this one? Yeah.
Lyra Altman from the office of Lyra Altman. We did have some of the tenure executive session yesterday and heard your comments. We'll start with a few of the little ones. First of all, there was a comment that the floor area on the plan is different from on the statement of facts. I double-checked it last night. The floor area matches. I think what might have been looked at is, when you look at the plans, it says total floor area, 4,050.39, but then there are deductions. Once the deductions are taken out, it comes to 4,000, and that's what's shown on the statement. That's also what's shown on the zoning analysis form. It's 4,000 even everywhere. Tell me when you're ready for me to move on. I will wait for you to take a look.
I'm looking at P1.
Mm-hmm, I'm looking at P1 as well.
Okay. So...
May I show you where I'm looking?
Please, yeah. Oh.
There's sometimes on a piece of paper, it's a lot easier to see.
Okay. Yep. So what were you concerned about, that the floor area was not the same?
As in the zoning analysis.
There was a question whether the floor area on the plan, the statement and zoning analysis matches. I double-checked. It is 4,000 in all three locations.
Thank you.
I should say, in every place in all three documents, more specifically. Next, there was a question regarding the note that the Board has asked to be added, and you didn't see it. If you look at the floor plans, and once again, I will approach and show you where, it is on the floor plans, just for the record, on the bottom, right under the legend.
By what drawing are you on?
P2. It's on P2. It is on P3. It is on P4.
Wait, 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 wait.
She put it on our floor plan. Any plan with walls...
Oh, here's...
Any floor plan where keeping walls, she made sure to put it on there, so it'll be clear.
Okay.
You see that? Next, there was a comment that there's a conflict between the notes on the second-floor demolition plan and the second-floor plan regarding the joists. Once again, I will show you the plan. If you look at the second-floor plan, which is P3, this is, of course, a copy of the most recent set that you have, I should say. It says existing floor joists to remain, right here. That's the P3 that was recently submitted. But if you look at the D3, it was submitted the same day. Right here.
Wait, wait, let me get there.
No problem.
D3?
D3, the demolition.
Oh, demo, oh, okay, sorry.
Because there was an inconsistency, I was told, between the demo plan and the post-plan.
Yes. Second floor. So, I'm looking at D3, second floor.
Right here, top left. It says note existing floor joists to remain and to be raised.
Ah, okay. Yes. Okay.
So that does match between the two plans. I'm not sure what was seen.
I think it might have been the sections.
Might have just missed that, because they are...
No, no, I think it's the sections. Conflict between the notes on the second-floor demo plan retention and the section that indicates... Okay.
I will double-check my sections right now.
All right, just make sure also there's...
The second floor on P10 says existing floor joists to remain and be raised.
Oh, okay, so...
And on P11 as well.
No, okay, so if I look at... So there are lots of notes on this demo plan, so you need to know which one is the right one to look at. It says existing floor framing to remain and to be sistered to proposed framing as designed by structural engineer. So it's two sets of plans with different instructions. That's part of it. And so, how do we know what to do if you were relying on the demo plan?
It's going to remain and be raised, and then the new joists are going to be sistered to those raised joists.
No, I understand how it's done, but I'm talking about how note packages are done. You're supposed to put all the same stuff together. And by the way, you need to bubble the changes, because, right, how do we know that you made change to the drawing? We can't find them.
We can do that.
And then we're like, well, does it look like the other one? I don't know.
The architects can certainly do that.
Yeah, okay. And then, okay, so then it was the... Let me just look at the section.
I just... The section does show it to be raised for both second floors, P10 and P11, I think I just said.
P10.
P10 and P11.
Okay, it says raised and, okay, okay.
And last, I think the last item was the bigger of the items, which is the percentages of the floors. At the last hearing, we were told to keep the wall on the chimney side, because what was going to happen, and this is what was stated at the hearing, is, once we changed the attic to match what we were asked to do, we weren't going to meet the 50%. So before going that far... I watched the tape last night. That was actually what was said at the hearing. It said, "We need to do that, because under 50%, when you fix the attic, to include only the area that's floor area." That was a quote from the hearing yesterday. Well, last hearing, I read it last night. And I will tell you that we went over it, and first thing that was done was, in accordance with the last hearing, the attic was revised. The only walls that are being included in the attic as existing walls are those that A, enclose floor area, and B, are on the outside of the building. That was the first thing we were told to do at the hearing last time. So if you look at the plans, you will see those are the only walls that are included as existing.
Could you take us to the... Where are we talking about?
Certainly. Let me just pull out the... Those I don't have pulled out. Here we go. If we look at page E5.
P5?
E, E, sorry.
No, it's a...
A little bit hoarse today. Tell me when you get there, and I'll walk through.
Okay, I'm there.
The only walls that are being included as existing walls are the 15-7 on top, which encloses that bedroom, which is floor area.
15-7, I don't find 15-7.
I'll walk over with my phone.
Oh, there's 15-9 on the bottom.
That's on the bottom.
It's 15-9.
No, 15-7 on top?
Nope.
Right by the property.
On the proposed conditions plan?
E5.
Well, but if we look at the proposed...
Well, I was going to show you the existing first, to show you what we were counting as existing, and then I'll show you what we're keeping, what are proposed. Agreed, we're not keeping all of the existing.
Oh, okay, uh-huh, all right.
So, as discussed at the last hearing, 15-7 here, enclosing the bedroom and on the exterior. 7-2 and 3/8 here, enclosing the bedroom on the exterior. All of this is under 5 feet, we didn't clear it here. 15-9 on the bottom, which is stairs, senior, and 11-9 and 3/4 in the front for the deck. That's what we counted as existing, or the discussion at the last hearing. Now, when you look at the proposed, I'm going to go to the add plan again. What is being maintained is 13/6 of that wall on the top.
Right.
And 15-9, which is the entire wall on the bottom.
And what plan sheet is that...
That is, I'm going to do P5.
P5, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Once you take that, and you rerun the calculations on the demolition plans, if you look at page D2, what you will see is a breakdown by floor. And the total comes to 50%. One of the things we also looked at is what percentage, when you look at the first and second floors together, what percentage are we maintaining? The answer is, we are maintaining 48% of the first and second floors combined. When you add in the walls that are being maintained on the attic, we come to a total of 50% for the building, which is what was requested by this Board.
Okay. So I just... Because I didn't listen to the tape, and I'm going to have to just take your word for it.
I certainly... That would be gutsy to come here and tell you something was on the tape that wasn't.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just also saying, I also recall at the last hearing, we went, I think it may have been, we took a break, and...
Yes, that's correct.[1592.46]
And I went through, and she was like, "Are you talking about this wall on the exterior and this wall?"
Yes, I came over, and we approached, and you and I had a conversation about this.
What I'm concerned about is this potential of playing the floors against each other. So, if we were to just take your argument to its absurd conclusion, a second floor with only 20% wall retention and an attic that makes up for the 30% would create effectively demolition of a building, right?
I understand. You had said that at another hearing, and we took that to heart, which is why, if you look, there are no floors that are maintaining very little. We are maintaining 56% on the first floor, 40 on the second, and 58 on that.
I'm not saying about this case.
Understood.
I'm saying that... Please let me finish my sentence.
Pardon me.
Just give it a whirl. Yeah, okay. So, um, so I... What I want to say is, going forward, this is my new going forward, not applying to this because I'm afraid of the natural whittling away of the whole purpose of this, that the makeup can only be 5%. So, you've got to have 45% on every floor in order to play this one off of the other, okay? I'm just saying that now, moving forward. I just don't... I'm seeing too much whittling away of existing floors when I'm saying 50% you're supposed to be keeping. And the original... The way this came up at one point is, we had like 48%, and I said, "Oh, okay, 48% you can use some attic." But I didn't mean for it to be arguably 30% or 40%. So, going forward, just to be clear, 45% is the minimum makeup.
And just to note, in this case, she's maintaining 48... They're maintaining 48% on the lower two floors, and it's 2%.
Correct.
No, 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 I'm just going to be clear. I want to state it again. They're retaining what they say is 56% on the first floor, 40% on the second floor. I'm talking about a floor by floor.
So, you're saying 45% per floor?
Yes.
Floor by floor is going to... You're requiring, going forward, 45% on every floor.
Each floor. Yeah, so what I've been seeing, the requirement is 50% of each floor. But in the situations where you're like, "Well, how am I supposed to do this?", there's been people saying, "Well, can I make up for a little bit with the attic?" So, sometimes when you have to make up for a little bit with the attic, the only amount you can make up a little bit with the attic is 5%. I don't want to see the whittling away where we're spreading this whole thing over the whole building, and effectively, it's a demolition.
So, it's case by case then?
It's 50%, but when there seems to be a real struggle to achieve 50 without doing something that's really super difficult, there's a 5% give. But it's only in those situations where 50% is not achievable, okay? But I'm not... And it's to apply going forward, not in this case, because we already talked about it.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Excuse me. Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the condition that removal of existing exterior walls and joists in excess of that shown on the approved plans will void the special apartment.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Application for granted.
Thank you.
Item number 16201820BC, 2801 Avenue M, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions? Excuse me.
Good afternoon. Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session. As the board is aware, this has been a work in progress, where we've been trying to come up with a design that has, you know, reworked the attic in terms of design to make it a functional attic, which we think does provide a very necessary space and a very functional space for the family, but still taking the board's concerns and comments into account. I think from the last hearing to this, we took Vice Chair Chanda's recommendations and kind of direction. We've moved forward with it to create what we think is a nice design, what we thought was a nice design. We understand the board's comments from yesterday. So, with regard to the functionality or utilization of this attic, again, as stated in my materials, when you have children, you have a lot of children, you have a lot of children with friends, come over and play, the ability to have a room, even if it's not eight-foot ceilings, but something that has five, six, seven-foot ceilings where they can go...
That's not what you said in your submission. You said seven-foot ceiling.
No, I said there was an average of seven feet. If the peak is at eight and the wall is six feet or five feet, depending where you are, there somewhere in the middle is about seven feet. Even at five feet, children can go up there and play. It's a great place to put a couch and watch TV for children. It's a great place for them to play Legos. It's a great place for them to go read a book so that they're not on top of each other. If you have four kids, each kid on a weekend has two, three friends coming over to play on a Saturday afternoon, the ability to have extra space for them to go is something that this family, obviously, has spent a lot of money, thinking that it's a useful space for them. It's something that we find in a lot of homes in this area that have these attics with these heights and these dimensions, and we do find that it's a useful attic.
So, I don't know how you get to seven-feet height as your average, because the drawing shows a little one-foot strip that's eight feet. So, if you widen that, it's a little two-foot strip that's seven feet. So, the average ceiling height here is probably six feet, which is not even a legal, occupiable space. I'm not even sure...
I think the 25 and eight feet, I think, is...
No, five and eight counts as floor area, but I think below seven feet, you're not allowed to have it occupiable, then it becomes storage, right?
So, the knee wall, as he's calling it at the center, is all six feet. So, that's a span of 12 feet wa... 12 and a half feet wide at two areas. So, you have the middle area that... And also, the middle in between the two dormers is also six feet wide. So, your five-foot knee wall is only at the... Above the extension portion. So, you do have an attic that does have a space that's higher. We can, if the board wants, we can dimension this to show where the heights are. My statement was based on my analysis of what this...
No, we've had too many hearings on this. We just need to move on with this, right? So, you know, for my position... My feeling about it is that, and, you know, we could vote on it however the board wants to vote, is that, that had the architect been sensitive to the question of how this rooftop addition would work, the addition would have been much more reduced in length. Because what it is, is exist this long, weirdly shaped thing that is just what this architect does on every house, no matter what the situation is. Like, no compensation for a particular situation, where this is essentially half of an attached house is the kind of the way that it's being... Or semi-detached house. So...
But I don't think that's the way it's being presented now. We've heard that comment, and we addressed it.
No, it is actually, because it's going from as far forward as you can get to as far back as you can get. And if there were... If instead, it was treated as some kind of a smaller addition, maybe it wouldn't look so bad.
But in taking the board's concerns from last hearing, where you mentioned the semi-detached look, we did add the dormers at Commissioner... Add Vice Chair Chanda's suggestion as a possible alternative. We added dormers on that side. We broke up the frontage along that side. We broke up the frontage on the front along the avenue, along East 28th Street.
No, well, actually, there's only dormers at a part, and then it sort of devolves into this straight-line extension. So, that's another part that's quite confusing. Why was it treated like that? But, you know, I don't want to get it into any more. I just want to bring it to a vote. So, and, you know, I personally would prefer to see just the rear yard extension, because that's what's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I think a drive-by of this addition will be one of those, what the... When you pass by this house, which you do notice on some of these additions, by this architect, by the way. So, you know, I'm just concerned about the message that it delivers about what the board is willing to accept, and then is used as precedent for other bad solutions to these buildings. And that's why I would just want to go with the... Because we weren't given any other alternate, with the lesser variants and leave it...
Permit. What? This is a special permit, so...
I'm sorry, the lesser special permit, the lesser version, which is just the rear yard extensions. But, you know, the majority speaks, and so I would be interested in hearing what other people think they want to do. My preference is that lesser proposal.
Um, I'm sympathetic to their programmatic need for space for their children, having three children of my own. And so, I don't think that it wreaks such havoc on the neighborhood to have that attic. I don't think every house has to be a museum-quality house or a showpiece for the neighborhood. And so, I'm willing to support the amended proposed plans with the attic.
Oh. The amended...
The ones that... The one that has the attic.
Okay. Others?
I think that from the last... From the last submission to this submission, there were some changes made to this attic. I wouldn't be opposed to having the applicant make another submission, but if...
I just want... I want to be done, so let's just pick your...
To that point, if you...
Pick your side.
Yeah.
But to that point, if there... I mean, Commissioner Otley-Brown, if there's something on the attic that makes it... You know, I appreciate your support, Commissioner Shabeta.
Sorry, this is my show, so stop. Okay, I'm asking the commissioners what they think, okay? So, just wait, all right? So, I would like to hear from Commissioner Shabeta and Commissioner Chanda.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Otley-Brown on her argument. I don't think everything in hell should be like similar to the others. If the family is big, I'm sympathetic with them to give them that.
Okay. I think I see both sides of the argument, and I know I did ask you to look at extending the dormer out to make the other side a little bit more balanced. And you have made that attempt, and there are restrictions on it. I think the problem is the way the roof line kind of just gets skewed, and that just makes the appearance from that frontage look difficult. And short of rebuilding the roof completely and almost lifting the roof up, existing roof up, there isn't a solution.
Well, they are rebuilding the roof.
Well, they are, but...
That's the only way you can do this project.
They're keeping the existing roof liner, but they're adding into it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's almost not like...
No, 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 but the way you do a project like this is called rebuilding the roof. So, they are rebuilding the roof.
Well, looks like that. I think... I think the amount of ask that they're making is not significant, in terms of the total FAR.
No.
It's well within. And most of the frontage that is most... That I was most concerned about was the... What's the street?
East 28th.
You're talking about street front as opposed to the side?
East 28th and Avenue M.
Yeah, East 28th, and that has the biggest presence. And I think the... Instead of having... I mean, having these dormers kind of breaks that up a lot more. So, I... It's not a best solution, but it is better than what you had submitted before.
Understood.
So, based on that, and given the argument you have made that this family needs the space, I'm leaning towards the amended plan.
So, you're basically saying it's less terrible than the last one, which was what I said.
Yes. And, you know, we have never seen... I mean, yes, we see the goods and the bads and the uglies and all of that. But every neighborhood has a mix of it, and I think this is a much better solution than what we had seen before. So, it's not the ideal. I agree with you. I completely agree with you. It's not the ideal one. But given what they're trying to achieve, given what they're trying to be within the budget and other programmatic... I'll accept it, but next time we will push further.
Yeah.
And I think this is the message everybody is getting.
Understood. Understood. I think Mr. Garfinkel attended a couple of the hearings and, you know, took his...
Doesn't seem to get the message so thoroughly.
He's working.
No, I hate... Okay, so, did I close? Oh, speakers. Are there any speakers on this? So, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant?
Just to clarify, to grant based on what plans.
On the proposed... The proposed with the attic.
On what date were they submitted?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's February 27th.
February 27th with the attic expansion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
They're called... They're proposed alteration. Oh, there's also... It doesn't need that, because it's really not removing much existing material. It's just a really small addition.
They're dated February 27th. Oh, so, these were... They're dated February 27th. The certification requirement came out that day, and we pushed it. So, it was submitted March 1st, but they're dated February 27th.
Okay, dated. Okay, yes, 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 yes. We'll buy the date, not the submit.
No, I was just clarifying with the...
Thank you, yes.
No, no, it's what we were... I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt, but we saw the date here, 3/1, you said, when we come to that.
Oh, you were correct. It's the date of the drawing, right? Not the submit.
The date on the plans is February 27th.
Yeah, correct. Okay, so, it's a motion to grant the addition with the rooftop addition, which is described as proposed alteration on the drawing.
Okay.
Chair Promata?
No.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
No.
That is an approval.
Thank you very much.
No, it's 3 to 2.
3 to 2.
It's 3 to 2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes, do apologize.
Sorry, I apologize.
3 to 2. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, item number 17201821BZ1773, East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. I thought he said, yeah. He said, no. That's 3 and 1. 3 to 2, yes. Item number 17201821BZ1773, East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Okay, sign and proceed. Get so sloppy.
Good afternoon. Lyra Altman from the office of Lyra J. Altman. Once again, we had somebody attend your executive session, heard your comments. To begin, we heard there was a comment on layers of text being illegible. I went over the plans. I do see what you're talking about on A10, A11. I apologize. We'll have that corrected. With respect to the zoning chart, you are correct. It needs to be updated. We will have that done. Regarding this statement, it was...
Wait, wait, wait. So, the zoning chart says one thing, and the plans say another thing. Therefore, if the plans say there was a reduction in floor area...
The plans are correct.
How? No, but where was it taken from?
The reduction in the plans is that the rear yard went from 30 feet to 32 feet. It was taken right off the rear of the building.
Okay.
We will gladly... My documents, the statement was revised accordingly. I apologize that the zoning analysis was not properly changed. We will have that done. On my statement, there was a comment on the side yard reduction. It is correct. I double-checked it. But the rear yard did have a discrepancy. The rear yard, I wrote it out in words correctly. When I typed up the number in the print, I accidentally...
Right.
Hit the wrong number. I apologize. I wrote 17 instead of 19.
That's where I was...
Or 19 instead of 17. I hit the wrong number in the numbers, but the spelled-out version is correct. So, I will have that corrected, along with the zoning analysis, of course, and the illegible text. You know what the change is as well. The last question was regarding the height. And the reason the height is what it is, the height you're looking at on the plan shows from the floor to the ridge, which we all know there are support beams inside the building as well. But what the architect did when he designed this building, he thought about how to do this without impacting the neighborhood. And so, what he did was the following. If you look at A14, which your board already has... with an attic, we're not doing that here. This is an as-of-right rear yard, actually larger than required, which is, requirement is 30 feet, we're providing 32 feet.
So what's that have to do with reducing the height of the attic?
The problem is he needs this height in order to have usable space in the attic. I spoke with the architect about this yesterday, he said, once you start getting all the supports for the attic and all the slopes for the attic, you will not have usable space if he starts lowering it, and that was where his concern was, which is why when he designed the building, he set it back the way he did to try to lessen any potential impact on the neighborhood.
And when you say usable space, how high is?
You know, I asked him that yesterday and he was supposed to give back to me today.
We didn't get any sections.
With the dimension, you do have sections.
No, the sections that would show usable.
They're not dimensions on the interior.
Right, so.
I spoke with him yesterday, I requested that, I don't have that number, he didn't give it to me just yet, but as I will be coming back to your board with a revised statement and a revised zoning analysis, I will, of course, have that added to the plans as well.
So we, and the, the dimensions are only to the peak, not that you could read the dimensions, but the dimensions are only to the peak, so they're not to the underside of the structure.
Can I make sure that we're looking at the same thing? It looks to me, interestingly enough, when I printed my set, and I don't know why it's a problem only on the.
It doesn't matter.
Electronic version.
Because they turned on the second layer, there, it means there are two layers with dimensions.
But it's in print that way, which is interesting, I think. A10 and A11 come up clean on the printed versions.
Because when you print, it comes up with a different layer set, the layering set is different for printing than it is for viewing.
It's, what's interesting about that, the only reason I noted is because these aren't CAD files that I have, these are PDFs. Theoretically, a PDF should print identically, CAD file, I understand, it wouldn't do that.
Okay.
So just looking at the dimension and what I can roughly read.
This is, which do you want?
Twelve six to the top.
Twelve six and a quarter, to be exact.
Yeah, twelve six to the top of the ridge, and there's a two-foot deduction, so that takes us to 10, so.
And that doesn't go to the supports of the attic, you see, that's just for the setbacks.
Eight, it's, we're looking at an eight-foot ceiling.
Give or, give or take, but I don't want to give you an exact dimension until I have one from the architect.
Right, but the, but then there's a short section, the lateral, the lateral section that shows a 12-6 to the top of the ridge and only a foot of structure, so what we really need to know is what the ceiling heights are in plan?
Understood, I've asked the architect for that already, I just don't have the dimensions yet. But when I do submit these other documents that we've already discussed, I'll be happy to make sure that the plans provide their heights.
We, we actually asked for that before, but what we ended up getting was only areas where it's not counted as floor area, which he designates using these little triangles, but we don't see where, what the ceiling heights are within, okay, because, yeah, all right. Okay, so there, there were things that needed to be corrected on the plans anyway, right? So you need to.
Not on the plans, but on the zoning form and on the statement.
Well, on the plans, yeah, the plans, we couldn't read the dimensions.
Oh, that's correct, it's not a correction, it's just a cleanup, I'll have that done.
Right, but then in the same time, I would like you to look at reducing the height of the attic, which is what the direction was the last time, and instead, I don't know, maybe he pulled back since then, I don't know, but we didn't get a reduction in the attic height.
I'll speak to the architect.
Okay, because it's a very tall, it's extremely tall to the peak when you look at the short section, right? And when you look at the elevation, and, and part of this is because we don't have any other context drawing, the building is very massive looking in elevation, and so it sort of just is a little shocking on the street.
Well, I will tell you, if you look at the axonometric that was submitted to your board.
But the axo is out.
It does give a better view.
You know, but the axon is out of context, it's just a floating structure, right?
My suggestion would be, I'm looking at section on the plan drawing A10, and that interior triangle.
A10.
That, that is there, that is over the staircase, if you look at A10.
I see that.
I think if you take that ridge line and if you take, extend that all the way to the exterior on the front of the building, that may take the height, I mean, the total ridge height may be the same, but it would be further set back.
Set back.
And in the back, you know, you can probably do some kind of a dormer type of thing within it to allow for some space with it in that center line. See if that's possible.
It's because, you know, what we're seeing is the dormers are very high, they're what's got the high peak.
Right.
And so I'm not sure why you need dormers with such high peaks, because it's the dormers where the main head clearance is, right? And it seems like, you know, we always see these dormers that are the same dimensions horizontally, and you can flatten the roof height by having a broader dormer, and so that, and I never understand why we always see the same dormers, it's like there's a dormer module in the CAD program and you just pick one of the dormers and that's it. Dormers can be shallower, then you get more usable head height because it's a shallower peak, right? And then it's a broader area that's within the dormer.
I'll pass that along to the architect. I will also show you, there was a comment a moment ago that it wasn't shown within context of an axonometric. If you look at page A17, that was again, already submitted to your board, there is a streetscape which shows the context of this building proposed with the existing buildings on either side.
Well, yes and no, you know how those work. So those are not axons, that's a perspective.
No, but you said that didn't give you a perspective on the street, so this is to give you more of a perspective.
It, it sort of points to me that there's something strange going on on the roof, because I can tell from that rendering, it's not particularly accurate as to what's actually going on on the roof.
I'll speak to the architect about it.
Okay, yeah. It's like this strange, it's almost like it was a little hard to draw, so they fudged it over there, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope that's not what happened.
Yeah, no, but that's what happens when you do these little hand axos, and it's, I mean renderings, it's why it's better to do a rendering program if you're not a renderer.
No, this gentleman does hand drawings, actually.
Oh, well, somebody did that.
He had somebody else put them in the computer to make them more clear for you, but he actually does hand drawings.
Ah, okay. This looks like he traced it from something, that's kind of cool. Yeah, okay. All right, so we need to put this on for continuation, please have him look at flattening.
I did make the note.
Okay, yeah, but if you look at the axo, and then you look at the rendering, they don't look like each other. Okay.
Also, the, I'm sorry, the legend for the walls, the applicant, I'm looking at.
What page?
A10, A10, and you see wall legend, wall legend, and there is like a discrepancy between the two legends, so there is no need to put it twice.
A10?
Yes.
It should say, it should say Joyce legend, you're right, on the top one should say Joyce legend, the bottom should say wall legend.
Yes, I mean, it says existing Joyce remain, existing varying Joyce remain, I'm not sure what it's.
I will have the legends corrected.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
All right. Okay, how much, oh, you got our speakers?
No, are there any speakers on this?
How much time would you need to submit?
I don't think it's that much for the architect to do, so if we could have three weeks, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, that would be about April 10th, so that puts you on April 30th, that work?
I believe that does.
Okay, so submission April 10th for a hearing on April 30th.
Submission 410, continue hearing 430. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number, oh, sorry, item number 18, 2018, 138BZ, 257 West 17th Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldson for the applicant, we have submitted a request of withdrawal without prejudice.
Right, so I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
Shoot, sorry, on the wrong page. I apologize. Chair for monitor.
Aye.
Vice Chief Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabat.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we keep going or take a break?
For lunch?
Keep going?
Okay.
Then we'll take a break at two.
Yeah.
Okay. New cases, item number one, 2018, 143BZ, 20 West 14th Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldson for the applicant, we have submitted a request of withdrawal without prejudice.
Right, so I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
Shoot, sorry, on the wrong page. I apologize. Chair for monitor.
Aye.
Vice Chief Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Shabat.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we keep going or take a break?
For lunch?
Keep going?
Okay.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Then we'll take a break at two.
Yeah.
Okay. New cases, item number one, 2018, 143BZ, 20 West 14th Street, Manhattan. Let me just fix this a second, sorry. Yes, I know. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board and respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, yes, that's for the sentence. From opposition.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Hi.
So I know there were a few questions that were raised, we can start with the biggest one, with respect to the noise. Now, we weren't aware of any of the letters actually being submitted to the board, but just so the board is aware, Fit House did open for business January 28th. After opening, they did receive complaints from neighbors and the co-op board. In, in effort to quickly respond to that, they worked with the co-op board, a sound test was completed on February 11th, we'll submit that to the record, and there's also, as I understand, I believe March 22nd is a follow-up test that's scheduled, but they'd been working with the co-op board on this. Just to quickly summarize, and we can put this in the record, the issue that was happening with the noise was primarily volume-related. Fit House's activities are not weight, they generally have classes, aerobics-type classes, and the noise issues that were happening were related to the volume of the music and the microphone. During the initial test, when they went and did these tests, when they had the microphone and music volume set to 100%, you could hear things in the two apartments up above, two D and C, I believe they are, they then reduced it down to 90% and you couldn't hear it anymore.
And they did this testing in apartments D and C?
Yes, they did it with the co-op, so in, they had, like, I believe that they did it when no classes going on, they had an instructor down there doing the music and microphone like they normally would, and then did the test up there, and they found that reducing the, the max volume down to 90% took care of the majority of the issues. Since that time, what they've done is they actually have a delimeter now installed on the sound system that sets it to a max level of 88%, and upon information and belief, since they've done this, they haven't received any continued complaints. I don't know if the board has received any other information or if there's any follow-up, but they did recognize an issue, they promptly tried to address it, and they went to it with the volume and it seems to have taken care of it. As I said, the follow-up test is tentatively scheduled for March 22nd, and our hope is, is that follow-up test will show that the measures they've taken have taken care of it, and we're also hopeful that upon their satisfaction, the co-op board will give us a letter that we can submit to the record showing that it's been taken care of. So to summarize, it was an issue, they're aware of it, they're working on it.
And there was also noise, not just in the apartment, in the lobby area, so all of those.
Right, some of the lobbies, but as far as I know, it was primarily the, the issue in, there was an issue in a lobby with one corridor, I believe that some construction was done with drywall there, I don't know if that's specifically in the PCE space, it might be like in the building space that was working, and I'm not sure if the Fit House did it or if the building did it, but some of that work was done. So what we'll do is we'll submit the, the sound report, and we'll submit a list of the items that were done in order to rectify any issues, the board is aware of that, and provide information, I know specifically on the delimeter, which really was a was, but this is a situation where Fit House doesn't have weights, it's mostly classes, they do have a couple small classes where they use 20-pound, you know, the dumbbells, but it's not a situation where it's a dropping, so it's a, it's a, really a music issue and not a vibration issue here, so that's how they took care of it.
You said that it was taking care of most of the issues, what are the rest of the issues if that was only most?
No, no, if I said most, I mean, how's this, as far as I know, since they've taken the, set the volume limit to 88%, they haven't received any continuing complaints, but I do know that they want to schedule this follow-up test just to ensure that everything's taken care of.
Okay.
So, that's really what it is.
Okay.
So, known, working on it, and we'll submit that.
Okay, so the things that needed to be corrected, and we'll hear testimony from opposition, the floor area schedule on the plan sheet is inconsistent with the calculation?
It's an error, we'll, we'll fix it.
Okay, and then?
Just so you, just to say quickly, it's 3033 is the first floor, and I believe 2488 is the cellar, and there is a discrepancy between the table, and we'll change the floor plans to match the tables.
3033 and what, 20?
3,033, the first floor, and I believe 2488 is the cellar.
24.
We'll confirm that in the plans, though, but you're right, there is a discrepancy between what's shown on the plan sheets, each floor plan sheet, and the table in front, but we'll get those corrected and consistent.
And also, if you could explain in your statement of facts what the actual activities are that wasn't in the statement?
Sure. Yeah, it's a class thing. I think there was also a discussion yesterday about DOI and fire department, I think the fire department got the letter in, they don't forget the DOI.
They did?
Okay, good.
We have, okay.
And we can submit the flood map, too.
Sorry, I didn't catch the DOI, did we get DOI? We got DOI, thank you.
Oh, we did? Oh, okay.
Okay, so we can submit the, the plans.
Got it.
Oh, okay, I mean, I gotta email it to them.
So we can submit the plans, a description of the activities, the flood map, and we'll follow up with.
The testing.
The testing and everything that's going on.
Right, and the statement of facts update, right?
Sure.
To explain, okay, good, thank you. So then, are there speakers? I know we have opposition counsel.
Good sign-in. You don't need to be sworn in. Yes, you may approach. Is there another person?
Good afternoon, Jay Ginsburg of Levin and Glasser, 420 Lexington Avenue, New York, New York, for the co-op, 13 West 13th. Good morning, good seeing you all again. If the way number 18 went, so I'm in a good mood. So this is very much unlike the Brick Gym case, which some of you might remember me from, number 18 on the calendar. This is purely a music and noise issue, and to their credit, the operator has been at least largely responsible and responsive. The noise complaints that started in the week prior to their opening during some informal tests have not, according to the residents, actually been remedied. There was some informal testing where they tried to find the right max volume level, but the residents tell me and will tell you that the noise penetration issues into the second-floor apartments do continue, and the lobby area continues to have the noise problem. The issue of the lobby, the structural issue that was raised, is there's a doorway in the lobby that goes into the space. A wall was erected on the tenant's side of the door, so now it's a door into a wall, I imagine, but that has not arrested the sound issue. We do understand that sound limiters were installed last week, or maybe just slightly before that. We asked for joint testing of the noise levels with the sound limiters in place, given the timing, I don't fault them for not being able to get that scheduled with us, but we'd like to do that. To the extent that follow-up testing is scheduled for March 22, we would like to join that and have our own acoustical engineer present, maybe we can find some readings that we can all live with, and this will be resolved. The board president, Michael Cohen, who's out of state, asked if I could read his statement into the record, and then I'll turn the floor over to one of the residents. To the esteemed.
Is this the same one that he submitted?
It's not the same statement, no. To the esteemed members of the BSA, my name is Michael Cohen, and I am the co-op board president of 13 West 13th Street Apartment Corp. I regret not being able to attend today's hearing. That said, I wanted to provide you with a brief letter describing my experience over the past eight weeks to supplement my sworn affidavit. As a co-op board president, I am a volunteer, and my fellow board members and I dedicate our time to ensure proper oversight of our building for the routine issues we face. That said, I never would have imagined that I would face an issue that was this demanding of my time. Simply put, dealing with the noise issues created by Fit House has been a regular part of my life for the past eight weeks. On a near-daily basis, I've had to make a request to Fit House, to the Fit House team to lower the volume, and in many cases, multiple times per day. Simultaneously, I have had to make sure the landlord is aware of the behavior, just going off the printed statement, this is, the landlord would be the commercial, would be the netlessy. It was, it has interfered with my work and my personal life on a consistent basis. I cannot begin to describe my frustration at having to type the same email and text messages day after day, begging and pleading for the owner and staff of Fit House to lower the volume and identify a permanent solution to the issue, to address the issue. To be clear, Ben Chamela, or Chamla, the owner of Fit House, seems to be both honorable and well-intentioned. He has always expressed his intention to be a good neighbor, and he and his staff have generally been responsive to our requests to lower the volume. I also know that they have worked with the sound engineers to install a new sound system to install a limiter. That said, for whatever reason, none of the efforts seem to have worked consistently. Simplistically, operating at a lower volume level would solve the problem, but Fit House has been very reluctant to do so, presumably because of the vibe they hope to create for their customers. We, the residents of 13 West 13th Street, need your help. We are happy to work with Fit House to conduct joint testing to identify the sound levels that lead to a reasonable level of peace and quiet for our shareholders. Because we are neither Fit House's landlord nor its regulator, we need your help to use your regulatory authority to effect change. As our legal counsel has noted, we are asking for the BSA to compel Fit House to operate in a manner that does not disturb us. I respectfully request that you make sure that the proprietors of Fit House understand that any disturbance that would affect a reasonable person is unacceptable. Further, we ask that you make approval of any license to operate contingent upon meeting that standard consistently. Finally, assuming all parties can come to an agreement and Fit House addresses the issues, we need your help to make sure that there's an appropriate remedy for us should a problem arise again in the future. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions and you need to appear before the BSA in the future, please feel free to contact me. Signed, Michael D. Cohen.
And what's the date of that?
This letter is dated March 19th, 2019.
Okay.
I will turn the floor over to Ms. Moy.
Please identify yourself for the record. Sure. I'm Vanessa Moy, I live in apartment 2BN right above the Fit House studio and 13 West I live in apartment 2BN, right above the Fit House studio and 13 West 13th Street. I do have a signed affidavit form that you all have seen, but just to bring a little bit more color to what's been happening in the last eight weeks, I do live right above one of the studios, so I was consistently being woken up around 6:00 AM from the noise from the microphone. I could clearly hear the instructor saying everything to his students or her students at night as well, starting around 6:00 PM until about 9:30 at night. As Michael noted as well, the Fit House team has been very responsive to our complaints, but the fact that we did have to reach out, oftentimes multiple times a day, was really disruptive and frustrating. I also work from home about one to two times a week, so this is often very much disturbing to my work-life. And also, I have a dog, and of course, his, he hears the sounds about 10 times louder than I do, so he's often woken up and disturbed as well. I have not really been in town. I was away on work travel the last week when the limiter was put into place, so I can't really attest to the fact that it has worked, but definitely looking forward to the joint testing that's to be scheduled on the 22nd.
But is the limiter already in place? Have you been hearing sounds in this? When did you return from your trip?
I returned just late last night.
Oh, okay.
So, I, to be honest, I did hear it a little bit this morning, so the way the kitchen and the bathroom are placed in my apartment are still right above the studio, so actually that's where I was hearing a little bit of the noise this morning, but I have not been home really since.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other speaker? Mr. Dale? Is the owner of the studio here? No? No?
From Fit House, no.
Yeah, okay. So, that, my question is, there's a pretty elaborate acoustical drawings that were done. I'm curious whether the architect or builder could certify or verify that the acoustical work was done according to the drawings, because that's, it's quite surprising to me that there's so much carrying if you actually built it according to the drawings.
Sure, we can talk to the architect.
Because in one recent case, that was actually, the principal cause was they paid a lot of money to, like, float a floor and all of that stuff, and it turns out that the floor are engaged with the walls, so they paid all this money to float a floor that was badly installed. Yeah.
No, understood, and as I said, you know, if there's still issues ongoing, they're committed to resolving it. I think that they did, you know, I think as was, you know, spoken to, they have tried to move forward on this, and we'll get to the end goal. The end goal is we want to have the studio work, so it's not going to disturb anybody. But I do believe, as I mentioned, the primary issue here is noise and microphone volume, and less the vibration, which is sometimes more difficult to deal with. So, we can do that. You know, and as far as any joint testing? Sure, that sounds, sounds great.
Right. Okay, so, as we do with all of these gyms, it's really for you, you, your client, and the various engineers to work together to come to an agreement about this? We stay out of it, actually, until both parties come and are happy with the results?
That's fine.
Okay? So, let's give you enough time to work back and forth, so if there's testing on March 22, and it turns out not to be effective, then there's another round of whatever it is you have to do. So, I think there should be at least another month, so maybe early May? Do we have time like that?
Yeah, so, six weeks submission would be May 1st.
So, submit May 1st?
I'm sorry.
No, actually, maybe a here, yeah, maybe submission May 1st, but the hearing...
The hearing would be May 21st. Approximately two months from now.
Is there one? I'm just trying to think. We can do May 1st. I'm just trying to think schedule-wise.
Other schedules.
Yeah, 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 not this.
You want to do a little bit later?
I was thinking a little earlier, because I think that if the testing is already scheduled, hopefully it's taken care of, but...
But what if it's not?
Sure, we can do May 1st.
We usually see some back and forths. It doesn't quite work on May 22nd, right? So, March 22nd, so then you need another one, and then another testing, and...
And you want a control period.
Yeah.
Okay, so, May 1st, May 21st would be the hearing then?
Right.
Okay, that's fine. And we have, the minor items should be no issue, it's really resolving the noise issue.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Got that, Tony? Yep, great.
Item number 2, 2017-243BZ, 2916 Francis Lewis Boulevard, also known as 2929, 172nd Street in Queens. Okay, raise your right hand. Do affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, and respond honestly to the board members' questions.
Elise Villader from Eric Palatnick PC. On behalf of the applicant, we will revise a few items for the next hearing. We'll make sure that there's zero lighting along the adjacent neighbors line, and show that on a lumens diagram, in addition to photos of the lighting. We'll provide, we'll update the landscaping and provide photographs of the landscaping. We'll show photos of the trash storage area, and we'll make sure there's a gate on it. And we will correct, get the firm map with the site location, make sure that the site location's actually on the firm map, and correct the statement of facts, so.
Do you know whether the U-Haul was removed?
We told them it had to be removed in the review, in the, as part of the notice of comments.
Right. But actually, I think your submission says it was removed.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying that was the removed, they removed it as part of the notice, like, in this process, we began with the U-Haul.
And I'm looking at site photos. I don't see, so our compliance officer did a recent site visit? I don't know when that was.
And I looked at the U-Haul site, and the, when you go to U-Haul website and ask for location, this does not come up.
Right. Okay, that's good. Okay, so, just taking a little longer for the pictures to load. Let's see. I just wanted to see, oh, okay, so there's, the pictures show this gigantic piece of equipment parked on the site. What is that? It's like a gigantic tractor or something?
Oh, it's a lift.
A lift for, right, oh, it's a lift? For what? Like, why is that stored here?
I can ask, and it might not be stored up there still, I don't know, but I can...
Well, when did you go on this visit?
I believe it was, I believe it was being used for painting on the side of the building. There was no painting in progress when I was there, though, but that's what I believe it was there for.
Oh, well, you can see, painting happened at one point. By the way, the, no way that the painter needed a lift in order to get to that level, that's called like a staff, step ladder. So, no, so, but you do see the lift, like a little cherry picker, in sort of an open position, so maybe there was work being done, maybe moved or...
Maybe these photographs can be provided to the applicant.
Yes. Yeah, I can inquire about what it was, and if it's still...
I'm looking at anything else. Everything else looks pretty good, actually. Dumpsters are exposed, they're supposed to be in an enclosure?
Yeah, we let them know, so I'll make sure they're in an enclosure.
Okay, so...
Did you also want to revise compliance?
Yeah, as long as we need a submission, right. So, it, just to indicate that somewhere in there, three curb cuts were what was permitted at the beginning, right? And some, so it wasn't, I don't know if it was in compliance, it might have been in compliance at the time, but that, it makes it sound like...
Okay, well, I'll put a clarification in the compliance.
Okay. What did I just say? Dumpsters need to be in an enclosure. I don't think we mentioned that before.
Yeah.
Okay, and, so these photographs show snow. This was a long time ago, this visit? Couple of weeks?
It snowed, it snowed pretty recently.
Yeah, that's true.
Took a turn for the best.
I just didn't think anything stuck. There's also a lot of stops stored outside in these photographs, like antifreeze bottles and things like that. It is not supposed to be stored outside.
If someone sends me the photographs, I can inquire about...
Okay.
We can send them to the applicant.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Super interesting. Okay, good. Those are the only things that show up, other than making sure the fire extinguisher is up to date. That's really, the fire department takes checks that out. Okay.
I think Mr. Euler is here.
So, are there any speakers? I don't see...
Mr. Euler is here.
Oh, Mr. Euler is here. Now, we got good stuff. Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Henry Euler. I'm first vice president of the Auburn Dale Improvement Association. The site and this application lies within the boundary lines of my civic organization, and I'm representing the organization with this testimony. We're handing in some photos of the site. It's a pretty busy station, gas and servicing vehicles as well. We were a little bit surprised to see that the service area is open on Sunday. And near the service bays, or three bays, the dumpster is there, and there's also a pile of tires in the corner. So, we agree with you, the dumpster needs to be enclosed, and if possible, the tires should be hidden from view as well. It looks kind of dumpy, the way that looks. There was one unplated vehicle on the site on March 17th. It doesn't seem to be a consistent problem, though. There's also a photo taken on a Sunday morning, and it's still, there's activity at the gas pumps. The station is basically clean. We've had no complaints from our members or from the residents about the site. Now, the last few photos, 6 through 9, showed the rear of the building along 172nd Street. We're kind of concerned about those wires back there, because we don't know if they're electric wires or telephone wires or what they actually do. Two of the wires go over the roof line, another wire goes over the wall and down apparently to the service area, and then they droop. So, as you walk along the sidewalk, anybody walking along could just pull them, and, you know, it's basically a liability, actually, for the company. So, they really should be fastened higher up on the wall. We're very pleased that they're not going to have a U-Haul business at the site. One of the residents I spoke to said that, you know, she really didn't want that because she was afraid that it wasn't enough room to park vehicles on, on the gas station site, and that she was afraid that the vehicles would end up, end up on 172nd speed on her block. And we, we're very appreciative that they withdrew that, and in fact, we're appreciative that they even mentioned that they were considering that. There was another case that you just recently settled. Everything was closed, everything was fine, and all of a sudden, a U-Haul business appeared on the site. So, we're following up on that. So, in some...
And that's one of our cases?
Yeah.
So, if you see things like that, do let us know, and...
Yeah, I did send you a letter.
Okay.
Okay, and I sent one to Mr. Costanz at Coffee as well, so he has it. So, in summation, we have no objection to the granting of this variance for a period of 10 years, starting from the date that the previous variance expired. We would expect all previous relevant conditions and past variances should be included in any new variance granted. If not already included in the previous variance, there should be a condition that there be no parking on the sidewalks, no storage of commercial and/or unplated vehicles on the site. Only vehicles awaiting service should be parked on the site overnight. Hours of operation should be stated clearly as well. The landscaping should be, you know, fixed a little bit. There's some litter in some of the, in one of the landscaped areas. We also noticed a sign on the southern part of the station advertising a pest control company. It was like a banner, so we don't really like to see banners in our neighborhood like that. We would like to see that removed. We know they're requesting permission to operate a convenience store on the site. They already do sell some kinds of refreshments there already. We have no objection to the convenience store in the current building, given, given that the site remained free of litter, and that the store be clean, and not disrupt the quality of life of the adjacent residential neighborhood. We don't want this place to be a hangout for destructive people. And we did mention that the dumpsters should be enclosed and the tires hidden from view. We are concerned about the Sunday operation of the service area, but on the other hand, you know, since there are no complaints, we, we thought, well, maybe this might be okay, since some people need to get their cars fixed on weekends, and maybe this would be an opportunity to do so. We're going to inquire further in the community about that, to make sure that everybody is okay with that. And we just need to note some clarification as to the current hours of operation of the business. So, other than that, that would be all I would have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. In terms of tire storage, so for one, the plans indicate there is an existing tire, I mean, dumpster enclosure. It's not existing.
I'll look into it and get back.
Okay.
And it will be existing at least by the next hearing, because the...
But so, in designing the tire, I mean, I keep saying that, the dumpster enclosure, which is right next to, is proposed right near the garage door, I'm wondering whether there's enough room to include, make it longer, and store the tires in there? If that's okay, if that's a legal way of storing tires?
I will...
Because they seem to be rather neatly stacked, and if they, and since the owners seem to be good at neatly stacking, if they neatly stack them behind enclosure?
Mm-hmm.
That seems like that would work? Okay. What else? I think that was it. All right, any other comments from anyone? Okay. All right, then. And what about issues of hours on a Sunday? We'll wait for Mr. Euler to get back to us about that? Is that there? Because on the last, one of the previous cases, we said no repairs on a Sunday.
Right.
But then that's a very big potentially nuisance.
Right, we don't know what the hours of operation for the Sunday one is. Is it again till 10:00 PM? I mean, I would be concerned about that, if it's only for like...
Few hours.
For few hours in the morning.
What are the proposed hours on Sunday?
I don't have them in front of me, but I will, I will write it in the submissions, so...
Great.
Because we also send that to Henry, and then he can let you know about Sunday.
Great.
Okay. All right, then, so we just need to set this up for...
How much time do you need?
I guess we need at least a month, because we need to provide landscaping, and...
Okay, that is a submission, four weeks, it's April 17th.
Okay.
For a hearing on May 7th.
Can I have one after, because I think they're going to need it?
Yes.
So, so the, so in terms of, Commissioner Shonda asked whether we could have the trash enclosure built, and so we have a picture of it, so that has to do with whether or not you're going to be able to use that also as a tire enclosure? I just don't know whether it'll fit there.
Yeah.
So, would be ideal if they were to build that and put the enclosure, put the dumpsters inside already.
We've done fence enclosures, where we came back to with the fence enclosure.
Say that again?
We've done plenty of times where we've done a fence enclosure for the trash, and then came back to you by the next hearing with the trash.
With a photo of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine, but this time we want to make it bigger to include the tires.
Yeah.
So, okay, so if it's doable and it fits the tires, that would be a great solution.
Yeah, and we'll let you know in the next hearing.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I thought that was...
So, the week after would be...
Better.
The next hearing, rather, would be, wait, sorry.
I'd like to give them all the Aprils of plan.
Sorry. I said April 17th, May 7th, the last time. Okay, so the next hearing after that is May 21st, with a submission date of May 1st.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Item number 3, 2017-273BZ, 975 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and respond honestly to the board members' questions?
Lyra Altman from the office of Lyra Altman. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. To go through a few of the smaller things first, once again, you request that we put your typical comment on the plans. We'll be happy to do that.
Put the, sorry, put the what?
The typical, note on the plans regarding the July. We'll be happy to do that, of course. You've asked us to reduce the FAR to 1.0. Once again, we'll be glad to do that. With respect to the side yard, there was a comment that it needs to be brought to 13 feet total. We're doing two straight-line extensions of pre-existing side yards. We're matching the pre-existing on both sides.
No, actually, so, so this is the thing where, in terms of increase, now I need to go to the, so, it's not, it's a straight-line extension of a part. There's another part, you have, you have variable side yard widths, existing side yard widths, right? So, and you're sort of opting for the narrower one when you do your straight-line extension, really, to go with existing plans.
The board has permitted that in the past, is that not?
But normally, it's where we've got a full side yard, the whole side yard is, is following that narrow line, and in this case, you're sort of selecting the straight-line extension, and by, in doing so, reducing the total side yard width to less than 13. So, you've got this variable side yard width, right? So, you've got 8 foot 9, which is your one-story masonry, which is what you're opting for.
Correct.
As opposed to, whatever this one is, it's not dimensioned, and then there's also this bigger one here, right? Whatever the bigger one is, the survey doesn't show it, but it's in the 10-foot-something range.
But that is something we've done on many cases throughout the years. We're doing straight extension of one of the spots.
This is something I, I remember when I joined the board, a question I had raised was, what do we consider to be the minimum depth of a side yard when you have variable side yard depth on one side? And I, and I was, I was, it was explained to me is that we take the minimum and do the straight-line extension, and that's kind of what I seem to recall we have been pursuing, line extension, and that's kind of what I seem to recall we have been pursuing, even if that may not be the maximum of the side yard. But it was a partial, but that's what has been, has been pursued. So, ideally, didn't, I didn't pick it up here because that's kind of what we have done in the past.
Because the side yards are always based on the least measurement, right?
The least measurement, right.
Even if it's reducing the total.
Absolutely. It's not really reducing the total.
No, it's not reducing the total.
Because the total is staying exactly the same. The total is eight, nine, plus four, one and a half. No matter where you go in this building, it will never go smaller than the total of eight, nine, plus four, one and a half.
Unless it's a permitted obstruction on your open porch, right?
The only time where-
No, of course, with the side yard, that doesn't interfere with the side yard number. In fact, there's a porch there.
Right, 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 it doesn't interfere with the side.
The only time where we have not accepted that is, let's say, if you have a bay window extending out that side.
Yes, right.
That's the only time we're-
That's different, understood.
And I remember that was used in one situation, we said, no, it has to be the wall that starts from the cellar space.
And that's understood, we wouldn't come with a bay that way.
Okay. So, I'm just looking to see what is on there.
Just for the record, the wall that we're talking about here is approximately 20 feet long.
The existing wall?
Correct, approximately 20 feet long. And I say that because I'm looking at P4, and on P4, it's 19, four and three quarters, which means the wall below is at least that number as well. Okay, the next question was regarding the eight-foot, nine-inch side yard. There was a comment that it doesn't match the survey. I checked everything. They all line up eight foot nine. The survey, the plan, and the zoning analysis all show eight foot nine.
The survey says eight foot nine.
Yes, it does. And I was told that, at the hearing yesterday or at the session, it was mentioned that our plans show eight-eight, as does the zoning form, but that is not what I see on my documents that I provided.
Uh-huh. Okay, just a second.
If you'd like, I can bring up the hard copy.
No, 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 it's okay. I'm looking at PDFs. It's just that, you know, sometimes-
I just know your screens are quite small.
The screens are small and the lettering that's selected, sometimes it's not so clear what the number is, you know?
Understood.
A six, a five looks like a six, those kinds of things, so.
Understood.
I'm just looking at, maybe there is one place where I saw it be wrong. Okay.
Okay, there was a comment yesterday, we're not exactly sure what it was, we want to make sure we have it clear. It was total linear feet on the exterior is not correct since the straight line extension looks like supportive second floor removed, how is it being retained? I think, when we looked at the plans, what you're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, is that when you look at the cellar plan, the shape doesn't match the wall above.
Yeah.
If that's, if that was your comment, we're going to fix the cellar to match the wall above.
Because it means you're undermining your first floor by removing the foot, the foundation.
We're going to, we'll fix that, not a problem at all. I just wanted to make sure that was what you were asking, so that we're providing what you're asking.
Yeah.
There was also a question regarding the rear yard. Unfortunately, I don't think these plans are very clear with respect to the rear yard. When you look at P1, you see a 20-foot dimension. And then you, if you look closely, you'll notice that's for one story only. There is a one-story portion that's at 20 feet. The remainder of this building is actually proposed to be at 22 feet. And if you look at the second floor plan, which is page, P5-
Say that again, do that one more time?
If you look at P1, what you'll see is the back piece that comes out the furthest, that's on the bottom left of the plan, is one story. That's a 20-foot rear yard. The remainder of this building is proposed to have a 22-foot rear yard. Unfortunately, if you look at page, P5, on the second floor plan, you will not see that dimensioned.
No.
I had this conversation with the architect yesterday, he acknowledged that that dimension should be on there, and he will be adding that, of course.
Okay, but why is it 22 feet as opposed to 25 feet or 27 feet?
Well, when we looked at the plan, what he saw was, the building to the right has a 20-foot rear yard.
Where do we know that? How do we know that?
On the rear yard study. It was provided to your board.
Do you know the height of that?
I don't yet have the height on that.
So, the question was about height?
I do, well, as I said, I've only got some information so far in everything. We've got, right now, I believe, now, I'm not going to promise that this is fully accurate, I believe it's one story. But again, we haven't done all of our due diligence on this, I'm giving you what I've been able to smize from last night. The house to the left is two stories at 25 feet. The house that's one over from that one on the left is 23 feet, two stories.
Can you repeat, the house directly to the left?
The house to the right is 20 feet, I believe one story. The house to the left is 25 feet, we believe two stories. The house next to that, on the left, is 23 feet. Again, we believe two stories.
Okay.
Now, there may be addicts at this level, I just don't have full information quite yet.
So, what that's telling me, because we're talking about the houses on either side of this, so either side, left, right, and to the rear, because that's where the rear yard is impacting, right? So, if the house to the left, therefore Lot 15, is 25 at the second floor, this house should be 25 at the second floor. As I said-
This is the information from last night, I'm not 100% certain yet. I will get more information based on your comments from yesterday's session. This is what we were able to pull between four or five o'clock yesterday and today's start of hearings at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay, that was the rear yard. Believe the sandworm maps were brought up yesterday. I'm hoping that you saw those, were already in the file, they were submitted about a week ago.
Okay.
There was a 1950 sandworm in this application.
Thank you.
Showing that the shape of the building is identical. There was a comment on the demo plan, a reversal of the dimensions. If you can just show me what you're referring to, so I make sure that we provide exactly what you're asking for.
I mentioned that, right?
That's correct.
Let me go to page 11.
Plan 1.3.
We just want to make sure that we're giving you what you want.
Demo plan reversed the wall dimension for one and second floors. So, in the wall dimension at the bottom, below where it says first floor demo plan?
Yes.
And first floor total wall to remain?
Yes.
That number, and where did I see it? Oh my God, trying to work this through backwards. To the second floor, when you take the, then you, when you go to 3P1.3, first floor wall to remain down-
Yes, I'm looking at that.
I think the 8.6, so the first floor total to remain is 8.6, 2.415. That, those, that was superimposed. I think the second floor number was brought in somewhere. If you can just look into it and get it.
We'll check all the numbers in the demo plan.
I was doing the totals and somewhere, I cannot recreate it in my mind right now, but it seemed like this, one of the numbers was coming from the second floor and the other one was, so they were just transposed.
So, maybe the length of a wall on the second floor being retained was used in the calculation for the length of the first floor.
I've made a note that we'll just check all of the dimensions, let's make sure we don't miss anything, we'll just check them all, no problem.
But you can just follow along on the drawing, you can-
Of course.
That's how, that's how I kind of discovered.
We'll check all of them, and we'll check the math on all of it too, just to make sure we don't have any errors.
The four and the three was superimposed, but.
Okay. Not a problem, I just wanted to make sure what we were looking at. Now that I know where I need to look, I'll make sure we go over the demo plan very carefully, see if we missed something.
Thank you.
Just looking for other comments.
Height.
Discussion of the height of the attic. The attic is 10 foot seven, you don't understand why. I spoke with the architect, and his comment was that the goal is 11 feet from Florida Peak, because that is how you get enough slope, that is how you get enough usable space, considering the slope.
Right, that's always the answer, but the question is, why considering the slope? What about changing the slope, right?
I will talk to him about that.
And then you can drop the whole thing down. I never understand this marriage to a particular slope.
I will pass that along to the architect.
Okay.
I think this is, this is this very similar roof plan that we discussed in the previous one, and we have the similar comment, like-
But very different architect.
Yeah, but it's the same CAD program.
Interestingly enough, just for the record, it's a different architect, interestingly.
Understood, but-
It seems like it's the same CAD program which comes with dormers, and you just hit on the dormer button, and you get dormers A through Z, and everyone likes dormer C.
And I think while we are at it, as I'm looking at the south elevation, I think-
Which page are you looking at, just to make sure I'm looking at you?
P10.
Okay.
Not knowing what the condition of the abutting buildings are, I think you should look at recessing the attic wall back, the, sorry, the roof line back. Instead of it being straight, it right now goes straight up and then just shaves itself a little bit more, I think it should be more than that.
That's the rear.
In the rear.
Well, so, there's more things happening in the rear, because they need to set that whole thing back five feet.
Okay.
So, that'll give you more opportunity to do something nicer with the roof line anyway. Right, but I agree that it's not a sausage, you don't just slice it off when you're done. You have to finish your design, complete the sculpture.
I will, I will pass that along.
Okay.
And the only other comment, I believe, was regarding the joists.
Yes.
And the reason for raising the joists was actually in an effort, because the first floor is currently quite low, and the goal was to gain some additional natural light into cellar. The top of the first floor joist is one foot nine and a half, I believe. I might be slightly off from memory, but it's one foot nine and change. And by raising that slightly, they're able to get more natural light into the cellar, which was their intention.
But so, but you're also excavating.
Correct. But excavating gives us height, it doesn't give us natural light. It's two different goals.
There was also a comment about open space ratio.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize, I will look over that as well.
I'm going to stop.
Sorry, I missed one there. Thank you for pointing that out.
By raising the height of the floor, that forces the first floor, that for the, for the reason of bringing in bigger, clear story windows in the cellar, which you already have, because it's a one foot nine height, right?
Well, it's one foot nine to the top of the floor.
But most of the time, we get light wells. That's the standard in these communities, where you just go and everyone's got a little light well. So, that's how you get additional light into the cellar, where you don't have to raise the entire floor, because if you raise the floor where you have a perfectly good, you're already excavating the cellar, then it's forcing you to raise the next one and the next one, and it increases the height of the building. So, I would say, if you want clear story windows, create a light well, which everyone does in this neighborhood. And, and that's how you solve access. Do not raise the floors. It's just exacerbating the problem without building height.
I will pass that along.
Okay.
And I believe we've hit every point that was brought up yesterday. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
I think so.
I'm just looking if there's anything else.
It's a big crawl space.
Okay.
I just have to make a comment on the section on-
Okay, which, which section?
P11. So, I'm looking at the section and looking at the crawl space in the rear. It's a 10-foot, seven-high crawl space.
Definitely.
It's not a crawl space.
That's a very fair question, thank you for pointing that out.
It's a chatting space.
Jumping, it's a basketball court.
And I would say again, on this one, you can reduce the height in the front of the building also. The master bedroom has a pretty high ceiling, and then the crawl space that is proposed above that, I'm not sure it's really going to be used. You can probably take that.
That little thing that is really called a crawl space, yeah.
I think you can make the angle of the roof line a little bit more, not steep.
Shallow.
Shallow, shallow, and meet the ridge line in the back, and that may also reduce some of the height perception.
Agreed. Okay, and the open space ratio, right, I think that was mentioned already, you need to address that because-
Right, we already said we would look over that as well.
And then, okay, I think we covered it pretty much. Okay, and you need a, yeah, that's it, and to add the note to the drawings about it.
Yep, we already said we would do that, of course.
Okay, all right, are there any speakers on this? Anybody, anything on terms of a date?
Oh, how much time do you need?
If we give three weeks, match the other application, I'd appreciate that.
Oh, that was April 10th, April 30th?
Yes, it was.
I think that is still, great, yeah.
So, April 10th submission for an April 30th hearing?
Thank you.
Continue. Okay. Sorry, sorry, just one, one thing.
Please.
When you talk, I said, not just the, the stories, but the heights, the actual heights of the, the two buildings on I-5.
We will see what we can find out.
Yeah, so it's now 216?
We have a break, yeah.
Do we need a 10 minute or 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Two cases, lunch.
30 minutes, 30 minutes.
All right, we're going to take a 30-minute break, so we're back at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
246.
246, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, back on the record, we're going to call, recall, item number six on the SOC calendar, 223-00-BZ, 272 West 10th Street, Manhattan.
Manda Ananya, on behalf of the applicant, we request next week pending LPC approval.
Did you reach out to LPC while, while we took a break from your second call?
Yes.
And were you able to get in touch with them or get anything?
We got in touch with them, but we have not yet received anything.
And they're in hearing today, is that right?
They are in hearings today.
So, we, we discussed potentially getting a letter from them, to the extent the board requested that they lean to look at this again.
Right.
And in consideration of your client's kind of, you know, needs, we could put this on the calendar next week to close.
Mm-hmm.
And maintain a submission date of April 10th for next hearing, or next decision date, sorry, of April 30th.
Sure, April 30th.
And that's, that's fine with you, and that's fine with the board?
Yes, thank you.
That's fine, so it's just looking for the LPC.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Looking, looking for the LPC, let's say, confirmation that they don't need to review anything further on this application. That's all we're looking for, for next week.
Mm-hmm.
To allow for a close.
To allow for a close.
All right, so we're going to put them off for April 9th.
So, yeah, so, sorry, so, they should be also on the calendar for March 26th, for a submission by Friday. Friday is doable, Ms. May?
Sorry, March 26th.
So, March 26th, just for, for vote to-
LPC.
Right. LPC.
And then the-
And then the, the decision date will be April 30th, with submission of all the outstanding materials regarding FDNY rooftop variance or anything outstanding by April 10th.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Continue hearing, just move that, April 26th. Okay, item number four, 2018-25-BZ, 109 Workman Avenue, Brooklyn. Do you want to?
Hello.
Hello. Anyone else, this is your team? Okay, raise your right hands. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Good, you can proceed. You want to sign in, you two, while he's talking?
Hello, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Eric Pilatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and, well, we're not quite sure what we heard. I'm pretty sure I heard that the board wasn't pleased with the application. I think that was the main takeaway, or at least Madam Chair wasn't. But I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on it. Our view and perspective of the application is that it's a... The request that we've made here is to reduce the required parking, and what we're asking you to do is to go, obviously, from 28 spaces to 14 spaces. And then to Department of Buildings would apply the waiver provision that applies, which would essentially bring it to zero parking spaces. During the application, when we brought the application during the filing process, the notice of comments were issued. And the notice of comments asked us, specifically asked us to do the parking counts and the calculations based upon the citywide data. We believe that the citywide data doesn't really tell you the story of what's going on at this particular location. And at this particular location, Linden Eye Care, Linden Eye Center, which the principals are here with us today, Andre is right here, and also Stonefield Engineering is here to do the parking counts and the calculations and the traffic report and all that jazz. And what Stonefield has presented to you as a response to notice of comments, which was asked for by staff, is not representative of the actual counts that are there right now. So, for example, in the Stonefield, the required parking demand, the parking demand that's generated, Stonefield showed you that based upon the SECRE findings, the SECRE technical manual, that there's 36 spaces that are the peak demand. And they also showed you that there's ample on-street parking available during the day to accommodate that demand. They think they showed that there were at least 53 parking spaces available during the average weekday. But the 36 demand that they showed, which could easily be accommodated on the street and wouldn't be a problem being accommodated on the street, also is a very conservative number. Because the reality is that's based on the SECRE manual, and that's the SECRE manual. By the time Andrew and Stonefield were done doing their calculations, showed them having, I think it was 463, 400 and something trips per day was the exact number. 863 trips divided in half is like a 430-something trips per day. And that's where we got to the 36. Andre is here to tell you that it's impossible. You'll never have 400 people coming to this facility. That number of 400 is derived from a mathematical calculation applying the formulas from SECRE to the generic uses of medical use. But this facility, Linden Eye Center, is an eye care center. It's where you go for eye surgery. It's where you go to have your eyes treated. There are 10 exam rooms, and there are five surgical rooms. And in those 10 exam rooms and five operating rooms are where you go if you have something to be done with your eye. Now, obviously, you're not going to be able to fill up 10 exam rooms and five operating rooms in one building with 400 people in a day. You'd have to be a machine of the eye world in order to see 400 people in a day and have all those people come into 10 exam rooms and five people. And then what I'm trying to show to you is really the lunacy here of applying the citywide standard, of the larger standard, of the SECRE standard, to the traffic generation count. So that's my introduction to the application, but I...
Are you going to go on more about that?
No, I know. I wanted to stop there because I think it sort of takes the application sideways to start at the 400 trips.
So to start off with the so-called lunacy, these are recent numbers that have, DOT has recently approved to determine what utilization rates are after studying, I forget what number it is, like 20 different sites. And the sites are medical offices of all different types, right? And so arguably, an eye exam takes actually less time than a physical exam. So if we were to blend together the really fast doctor's office visit where they just look in your mouth and they say, "You look okay to me. Your temperature, blood pressure, good. That took 10 minutes. Time to move." If we average that out to the other doctors' visits in the same medical office where it's something where you're sitting there for a really long time in the waiting room, eventually the doctor sees you, there's tons of things to talk about, it takes an hour for the visit or maybe even two. So if you average those out, it probably, somewhere in there, is the average eye exam, which, by the way, when I go to the eye doctor for an eye exam, I go through all these different points, and I am actually there for 45 minutes to an hour because there's all these different machines they use, and it's different things, and the eye drops that they have to put in your eyes so you, you know, you see stars for five hours later, et cetera, et cetera, right? So I don't see how an eye exam is a less intensive activity than these other ones. And in terms of operatories, you know, there are eye doctors who do laser surgery. There are eye doctors who do, which is really a fairly rapid process. What's slow is the recovery part, where they put you in another room for recovery. So it is completely conceivable, especially if it's eye care that's covered by insurance, where I have learned from doctors that now the variance insurance are giving them 15 to 20 minutes per patient, and then we have to move on to the next. That's the only way they can make their business viable. So I don't see any reason why we'd assume that an eye treatment is a different kind of a medical practice than others.
You don't have to assume. We have factual information to present to you, and we're not... And I appreciate the points that you just made. I mean, first of all, you said a moment ago that when you go to the doctor, you're there for 45 minutes when they blow the eye doctor, right? So that's exactly what Andre is going to be talking to you about. And Andre has the actual data we submit in our paperwork also, the number of patients they see on a given daily basis in our statement of facts and findings at page three. But Andre, you don't have to give the guessing. I mean, you just said that you've spoken to many doctors, and they have insurance, and you've learned from those doctors that they see people quickly and they get them in and out quickly, and they take insurance, they have to see them even quicker because it's the baseable, the only viable way, and that only the eye doctors use laser surgery. That's your assumptions, and I appreciate that. That's why I started speaking where I'm speaking to. That's where the SECRE manual is speaking to, is these assumptions. That's not the case here. We're not operating on, although those assumptions may be true in other cases and other instances, that's not the business model nor the approach that's being taken here. What happens here is you'll come to them knowing, first of all, thinking that you have a problem. So you can come to them thinking that there's something wrong with your eyes and you want to see the doctor, and you make an appointment. That's one way you get there. The other way you get there, and I'm going to let Andre testify in a few minutes, is they have an extensive network of hospitals and other eye centers that they work with where somebody gets diagnosed ahead of time with some kind of problem, and they get pre-scheduled to come in. And that's actually a large portion of their patient load. So they don't work on this thing where somebody's coming in and they're getting like, I go sometimes, you go to a cheaper Coens Fashion Optical, I think is what you're talking about, or something. Or you go in there and you have the eye exam. But that's from your experience, and I can respect your experience as the eye doctor.
No, I'm not talking about a Coens optical. I'm talking about an ophthalmologist who actually examines your eyes for eye health and so on.
Would it be okay if, so that way, we're just on the same page with their operations are? Because I think if you get comfortable hearing how few people a day, they... We gave you numbers showing you that there are 400 people coming in that's based off of a formula in the SECRE technical manual. We are nowhere near 460 people a day coming to this facility.
This could be something that can be easily showed by some analytical data of what you guys do on a daily basis. You can submit your, like, not, obviously, there's a whole bunch of hip of reasons why you're not going to put names, but the amount of clients that come in on a regular basis or projected to come in on a regular basis, what type of business they've had in the past, or does he own similar locations that have a similar size?
That's what we wanted to discuss with you today, because that's what we have. We have four other loca... This development is coming as an offshoot from three other locations that they have.
You only named two in the papers.
We named two. I will give you the third in my writings. We are at 589 Sutter Avenue, 2084 Linden Boulevard, which is right around the corner, and 625 East Fordham Road. Those are the three locations. So the way that this application is, the reason it's coming to you is because they are seeing at these other locations where they don't have surgery, that there is, A, there's a huge demand for their services, they're seeing, but also they're seeing there's a huge demand for specialized services that do surgery. And that's the idea of this establishment. So why don't you speak for a little second, Andre, just to give you the idea?
This is going to be supplemented by some...
Yeah.
Please state your name for the record.
Andre Gahn, Linden Eye Care. So like Eric mentioned before, we're running the eye clinics and the demand for ophthalmologists because there's 14 different specialties in ophthalmology. And it's so limited in our neighborhood that people, sometimes our doctors refer them out to Manhattan facilities, and they just don't make it. They don't go for the procedures, they don't make it there. So that's why we want to build it in East New York. That's one. As far as seeing 400 patients a day, that's impossible. That's just impossible.
I don't think that's what the, that's how trip generation works. Trips go back and forth, and it's not seeing 400 patients a day, I don't think.
It's, to clarify, with Eric Pilatnik, I don't mean to interrupt, Madam Chair, it's not 400 patients a day that we're talking about. The information we're reporting to you and we're disputing, the way it's presented to you, because it was asked to be presented this way, is the trip generation to the site. There's approximately 460, 430, some, I'm getting that number, but in excess of 400 person trips to the site. And that's what the whole discussion now is about, is the number of vehicular trips that come out of those person trips. So what we're suggesting to you, we're positing, is just the basic premise that we were asked to analyze it off of, which is this 400 person trips, 400 plus person trips per day, is what I was referring to as being quote-unquote lunacy. Not that the regulations are lunacy, but that applying those standards to this specialized facility is just impossible. They'll never see that, there'll never be that many people coming into the building, even close to that many people coming into the building on a day. So that's what we're trying to distinguish.
But so I would just like to ask, you know, an application is your argument to make. So when the notice of comment says, use, make sure that you're using the standard trip generation rate that DOT is provided, but in addition to which this study refers to the EIS for flushing, I think, then there's two different sources that say that this is the appropriate utilization rate, and there's nothing in your papers that's saying, under protest, we're using this utilization rate, but what we really would do is based on a study that we performed, because you also asked how many people drive at each of those facilities, right? There was nothing. So here we are, now that we're commenting...
If I can correct.
Let me just finish. Now that we're commenting that demand has to be met on-site, all of a sudden, now we need to look at a different model in this case.
Well, actually, some... Excuse me?
I'm a little confused about that.
Let me add some clarity. I viewed it exactly the same way you just described it, that it would make more sense to describe it the way that I'm presenting it to you right now. And we fashioned the application and filed it that way. We then received a notice of comments from the board, which directed us, and Andrew, can you test, Andrew Valari is here from Stonefield, under protest, as you just said, he didn't understand why we protested.
We had to...
We did. We filed it under this methodology, making the argument that it's more likely to utilize this information. Andrew put the data into his report. Andrew submitted it. We submitted it as a part of the application, because we do recognize that, you know, what you just said. And we were clearly told, we had phone calls with the examiner, we got the comments, and Andrew was told in no uncertain terms that that's not how the board is to review the application, and that we should be. So I agree with you, and actually, you know, from my years of experience in practicing, I tried to position that argument. But I also know that I can't move through the application review process by disagreeing with the examiner, with Eric Planes' examiner. So when we were given the notice of comments that disputed the way that we filed it, we acquiesced and submitted it the way that the board demanded that we file it. But we would, we did present it like that.
Do you have any recollection of what the demand was for under protest?
Yeah, Andrew is here, Andrew Valari is here. He could testify to that. Andrew Valari of Stonefield, he'd be happy to speak.
Good afternoon, for the record, Andrew Valari, Vias and Victor. It's okay. It's Vias and Victor, I-L-L-A-R-I. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York. I have prepared a report dated November 30th, 2018, that I believe has been submitted to the board. I have extra copies if you need it. Ms. Monroe, what was your question specifically?
So Mr. Pilatnik just clarified that he originally filed the application using the method that he's proposing here. That's different from the DOT trip generation numbers, and I asked whether that study came out with a different, or a demand for the site that's different from the 36 we now see with DOT.
Understood, got it. So we've looked at a lot of different ways to analyze this building. Early on in the application, I'm talking something in 2017, there was not a tenant specifically picked out. So we had done a number of studies early on, looking at the way medical offices generate traffic. And we also wanted to look at something that was more specific to the neighborhood. So we actually found a general medical office in East New York, just a couple of blocks away from where the facility was. We studied that. And then by the time we received the notice of comments, Linden Eye Care was identified as the tenant. So seeing the comment to use the DOT standard number, we complied with the board's request, and that's kind of how we got here. There's a number of different ways you can run these analyses.
So the answer to her, to Ms. Monroe's question is that, no, you didn't run an analysis. That came up with a different demand.
No, we did multiple times. There's a lot of different numbers.
But you never submitted it.
We did submit it, and then we received a notice of comments to revise.
Okay, so we don't know what the answer is.
I guess my question is, what were those numbers? How materially different are they from 36?
Eric Pilatnik, and I'm glad we're back to talking about those numbers that he submitted originally. Those numbers now, because things have changed, it's been almost a year since then, now, as he just mentioned, the second since the original filing of the application, Linden Eye Care was identified as the tenant. So the numbers that he presented, which we can give to you right now, of course, now we're asking that those numbers that were based on an actual study of a facility in East New York, we're asking that in lieu of looking at those numbers, that now that there's an actual tenant in place with actual businesses that are practicing that we can model off of, that we'd like to present those numbers to you to show you that the traffic being generated, the trips being generated are much lower than what the manuals are showing.
So I think the answer is, no, they didn't submit those numbers because they haven't done that yet because they're just on these, on this new, this new tenant.
So they don't know the number?
So if they may know it, they were going to have to submit that by the next hearing.
Right. But we can give you for the next hearing, the original numbers that we gave in the original file.
No, doesn't matter.
But that's irrelevant at this point. Okay, but that's what you're saying.
Okay, so here's my response to some of this, right? What's the length of the lease? Is it a 99-year lease? Is it a 50-year lease? What if Linden Eye Care moves out in five years or 10 years? Now we have, for argument's sake, let's say your utilization rate is 50% of what it is for the regular medical offices, right? But then Linden Eye Care with its 10-year lease realizes, this isn't happening, we need to move to another location, and now we've got a regular medical office in there that has a high utilization rate and no parking. Now what?
Madam Chair, it's a very good question. We've had this same thought before.
Yes.
We've had this exact same thought before, and luckily, we've all memorialized it in a July 25th resolution. And this is an application that is strikingly similar to this application that the board acted on. It's BSA calendar number 285 of 15BZ. I happen to have brought extra copies because I sort of anticipated the conversation was going to go here.
If you don't mind sharing them, so we can read along with you.
It's a whole bunch of them. Thank you.
Sorry. I'm understanding. Any other copies?
I think you can.
I can share with you.
So these, the parking special permits are not a matter of new, a new matter for you, or for any of us. And I handed off one. Here it is. So the board is, we know you've heard them for a while, and you know that they're special permits, and you've come across this concern before that Madam Chair just brought, which is if you use an actual tenant as the modeling, which I think it makes perfect sense because it's, the rule of statutes is always better to be specific rather than general. So we're giving you an actual site to study. In 2619 East 16th Street, which is a case I just referenced, is calendar number 285 15BZ, granted by the board on July 25th, 2017. That involved, as I said before, eerily similar building. The building there was proposed to be about the same size square footage, about 8,696 square feet. The architect, I think, is the same architect, Igor Zavlitsky, who's in the back of the room right here, ready to testify to you today. About the same size, to be a medical office with a very specialized medical operator, very similar to this. Not, you know, medical medicine is obviously very specialized, and everybody has different uses. In that case, I think it was somebody that was getting MRI testing or something done. But at the end of the day, the board had asked us to do a traffic study, which is not written into the resolution anywhere that the special permits would be granted on the traffic study. But you asked us to, and we did do it, but it's not a finding, and we did it. And we came back there showing you that the peak demand in that case was four. Now, there were four cars, and it's peak demand.
So I just need to interject, Vic, because we all remember this case. This is a very unusual situation where the owner of a facility, pretty literally down the street, was expanding their operation so that they could have radiation testing or whatever it is, radiology, connected with their other operations. or whatever it is, radiology, connected with their other operations, so they were quite literally sending the patients who were over a block away to this site, and that the four demand was the occasional person who comes, having made an appointment, to go to radiology, independent of first going to the doctor. And it ended up, by the way, being four spaces. So in that very unusual situation, we said, the street system, and if I remember correctly, there was no way you could fit four spaces on a site, and the street system could certainly handle the four spaces. We were not talking about, say, 30-something spaces put into the street system. So it's very different fact pattern, so far as I can tell.
And wasn't some of that building back office?
Yes.
A lot of it was back office.
Processing and reading x-rays and MRI results and stuff like that. And there was a municipal parking lot, I believe.
Two of them.
Yeah, there were two municipal parking lots. You're good.
A lot of availability.
You're good. There were. Okay, but it, to go to the point, and by the way, you just said everybody's familiar with it, two of the commissioners might not be so familiar with it, because they were not on the board at the time, and that is Commissioner Shaveta and Shaveta both were not here. So to familiarize you with it, I know the three of the five commissioners are very familiar with it. The, what the board just spoke to, that it was, we were sending patients there, it had a connection to another location, it was only four spaces, and that there were available streets, available spaces on the street. All of those could be answered in analogous to this situation.
No, no, no. Not that there were adequate spaces. There was only an issue of...
Only an issue of four spaces. So we'll start there. I believe, because we've run the preliminary data, that when Andrew is done doing the conversation that we just had with Ms. Monroe and the Chair, and Commissioner Shaveta, about modeling this over their existing operations, as opposed to the 400-and-something person trips that were in the paperwork right now, that that number is going to drop by almost to the range of four to seven demand. So the demand, but if I can get there, just let's go past that, because that was, that was just brought up, is in that case, it's only four. So in this case, I think that the number's going to show you, it's going to be minimal here. It's not going to be anywhere near the 36, because there's no way, as Andre just testified, that they're having 400-person trips there a day.
Right. Part of what led to a demand of only four was the fact that you weren't introducing a lot of new customers into the area, that were, there were already customers going to the other site. So it wasn't like there were going to be a whole slew of new cars going to this new site. Those cars were there from the owner.
Regardless of where the cars were coming from, the numbers are still the same. There's still X number of parking spaces available, and there's still X number of parking spaces coming to the neighborhood. So whatever language I put to it, it's still, at the end of the day, the same exact number of cars, regardless of where they originated from, where they came from, who's driving them. It's still a function of how many spaces are available on the street, and how many people are coming in vehicular trips to the site. The data still gets analyzed the same exact way, although I do see the distinction that you're making, but I don't think it's germane or relevant to the analysis here.
Right now, right now, I don't think we have an analysis here.
We don't.
We don't. I'll skip past that. I said I'll come back to that.
I think that, I think we should take it step by step.
I'll come back to it.
Okay.
If I could just go through the thing, I get it, step by step on that, and we'll give you the analysis of that. What I wanted to really go to, though, is the connection of the patients, of, in that case, was different, because there were patients. This whole conversation started, I passed up the paperwork, because Madam Chair said a moment ago, before we started this conversation, how do we know that we're locked in? In that case, it was, it was different, that how do we know that it's going to be this doctor? And that was the conversation that we just had on the record a few minutes ago. And I passed this resolution up to you, because I wanted to call out that at page 1, 2, 3, and I said a moment ago, the board has thought about this before, so that the board wrote that this is operating, as you said, in practice in tandem with its principal practice at East 14th Street, so that any change in ownership or operation would require prior approval from the board, whether the parking demand has changed. And then the board goes on at the end to say that it's specifically, the building's operation, the subject, that any change in ownership or operation shall be required, that any change in ownership or an operation shall require prior approval from the board in order to examine whether the parking demand has changed from four parking spaces, because the parking study considered by the board was based on the current operation of the existing medical facility and the current management practice. So what I'm going to is that the numbers on street parking are the numbers, they're the same. You're concerned, and you raised a valid point, what happens if the ownership changes? Maybe the numbers will change. My point is twofold. First of all, the special permit doesn't speak to any of this. All this is what we're writing in ourselves, which I'm not necessarily agreeing with, but which the board's putting in. But assuming that the board is analyzing the special permit the right way, there is a mechanism in place by which you could lock us in and make sure that it's our use that's in there.
Okay, so I just need to say, that site, and I was remembering the site a little bit, and now I see it, was at 25 feet of frontage. Where in the world were you supposed to get the parking in there, even using automated systems, right? Which, by the way, at the time that we looked at this, when we first started looking anyway, automated systems weren't so popular, weren't so common, and now more and more, we see them used on everything. This site has a 40-foot wide frontage, plenty of room to fit parking in, using an automated system. There's no reason why you need to use a ramp. So you go, so you're presented either with a building that exists already, or you're presented with a site that's so narrow that it's very difficult to accomplish even access to parking, much less once you're in it, as opposed to a site where you could completely provide the parking, using, you're already excavating a cellar, the cellar is being described as storage, so it's not functioning as a medical facility, right? So it's, we're really talking about a very different fact pattern here, right? And the standard is, you must provide to meet demand. Now, if you're arguing that the studies are wrong, I still have a problem with, what if you're wrong about your analysis? And two, what if this entity moves out, right? And it was very different in this case, completely linked uses, so...
I'm actually having, having trouble with bringing up another special permit grant, where we don't know the actual demand here, so we don't know the applicable...
We're going to provide you with it. We'll provide it.
I understand that. I'm just saying for the purpose of the conversation.
Yeah, no, we'll come...
Mr. Platnik, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Monroe, I apologize.
For the purpose of having this, of this conversation right now, I think it's premature to bring, I appreciate you bringing this up. It does show that we have before conditioned these special permits on, on people knowing that they have to come back if they want to change the tenancy. I would say, also, there hasn't been an answer to the Chair's question about the length of the lease, but, but if we could also direct the conversation back to what their submission should look like, and what it is they'll be preparing for the board, before we start talking about all these cases, like...
Yeah. I know, I could be happy to, and I thought, I didn't need to cut you off. It's an occupational hazard of mine. Why don't we first then go right to what Madam Chair just mentioned a moment ago? If you can, don't sit down, so don't get so comfortable. Igor Zavitski is the project architect. So you mentioned a moment ago about, we're able to provide the, we're able to provide the parking on site, because of the 40-foot width, as opposed to the 25. So Igor is here to testify to the board of why the 40-foot width is an impediment to provide the parking on site. But if I could even just, before I even said that, I'll just, I could preface the comment, which is, of course, we all know, we're here for a special permit, and as Madam Chair just said, the standard is that we must provide demand on site. That's not the statutory demand.
That's our, we...
That's the board's demand, I know, and you're entitled, in your view, to put it in there. It's not in the statute, though, and nor is in the statute proving that we're confronting some sort of obstacle, some sort of physical problem with the property that's preventing our development in conformance with the zoning. So that's not a requirement either, but I, we do want to, we want to give the board any information we can give towards an approval.
I'm not sure why we're, there really isn't a need to do this right now. I think the first thing you do is...
Is come back with the data.
Come back with the study, let, and we can, and we can build from there. And you may not have it, because you don't know, you know, we don't know what the numbers are yet.
We could do that.
So let's, let's take it one step at a time. I do think that the question that the Chair had is going to be, is something that deserves an answer now as well.
Yes, and Igor is here to testify to that, and we'll be happy to do that, and to answer the question and come back. We don't...
Igor, if you could speak to the size of the building, the size of the lot.
The lot is 4,000 square feet.
Your name.
Igor Zavitski, Architect of Record for this job. The lot is 4,000 square feet, so even if we propose parking in a base, in a cellar, it's really challenging to provide access to the cellar. Even if we design an elevator, it's still impossible to fit more than 10 cars, even if they stacked.
Why?
Because the zoning requires 300 square feet per parking spot.
Never mind the zoning, right? Let's talk, well, for one, it doesn't require that when you're doing stackers, but for two, the, the automated parking systems, which are approvable by, by DOT, provide for horizontal movement, automatic movement that goes back and front, so it's actually far more than eight, 10 cars. If, if the, if the zoning requirements get you all the way to whatever it is, 28 cars, maybe you would be short a little bit. Maybe we would be able to say, okay, you can have a break on four cars, or something like that. But I need to be persuaded, we see a lot of automated parking here. So to say, and we see automated parking used in the tiniest situations, where we don't even understand why an owner would want to do that. And so to say that you can't do an automated parking solution here, isn't believable until I hear from an automated parking person, who shows how it would be installed, et cetera, et cetera, and that it wouldn't work. I mean...
I just want to say, I mean, as I'm looking at this plan, if you do valet parking, you can put two rows of, two rows of parking spaces, four in each row, that gets you to eight right away, and then you can do a couple of other parking spaces, that'll get you to 12. So, you know, valet is a cheaper option possibly than automated parking. So what you need to do is to answer the Chair's question, and I don't think anybody here so far is convinced by what has been stated so far, is show us plans of how much you can accommodate, either using an automated system, or using a valet system, or a combination of valet with stacker system, how much can you accommodate on this site? And then, and not using the ramp. Take the elevator down and see how you, how you can accommodate. And then, we can help you, is to figure out whether what you, what is remaining is something we would consider. That's what the Chair said.
And I'm, I'm hearing your questions, and you're both very clear with it, and you're right on point. Here's my comment back, though. We're here for the special permit, and I'm not going to make any bones about it. We're here for the special permit to get to zero parking, because we're desirous of using the floor area that would otherwise be used for the parking, to be used for other purposes. We don't want to use the space that's there for parking. Now, he can give you, he's going to give you a plan, like you've asked, and it's, may or may not be, in their view, the ideal way to do it. It may be an expensive design, it may not be the most efficient, and we may be able to get six cars, eight cars, 12 cars, like you just said, and all that. But at the end of the day, every single special permit application that you have in front of you could put more parking in, and change their design around. They could take space. What, the discussion we just had about putting in the stackers, or putting in some kind of automated thing, that could apply to any development that comes in front of you for a special permit. Not every development that comes in front of you for a special permit, you said it in cases you've actually denied. You've said, take out, I have denials from the board, which were also before you came, on a special permit, which we withdrew, withdrew on Avenue Z a special permit. And the question there was, there wasn't physically enough room, because we actually had to, we didn't get to the waiver, and we actually took uses out of the, the space in order to accommodate. So there's always a physical way to achieve the goal that you're seeking to achieve. I'm saying to you, does it count at all, that we're up here telling you that we want to take advantage of the special permit that's in the law that lets us cut the parking down to half, because, just simply because we want to, and not because we, we don't want to provide the parking? Is that, is that, am I okay to say that?
Basically, the basis of the special permit, the idea behind it, is that there are certain uses for which the actual accumulated parking demand is far less than what the zoning resolution requires.
Yes.
You are the exact opposite. You are in a situation where your parking demand is higher than the zoning resolution required parking for your site.
Wait, I'm not sure.
Yes.
I'm not sure I follow your statement.
You require 28 by spot.
Right.
You have a demand of 36.
Right.
That's the exact opposite of the reason for the...
Well, that's based on, those numbers are going to, those numbers are going to change, so it's, you can't count on the 36 right now.
That's what we have right now.
Right. You have those right now, but we discussed why those would change.
Right. But given that, then it's understandable that the board would ask for parking spaces to be accommodated on the site.
Of course, unless, well, I don't say of course, I don't agree with the principle that a parking demand generates, I did, we disagree, we're allowed to disagree, I disagree that the parking demand is what gives you the authority to cut the parking down. I think you're entitled to, just on the basis of it being a good faith request by the applicant. I don't think there's any parking demand account. But taking your strat, your philosophy into place, we're going to come back to you, like I said before, with a lower parking demand, but going to the point that we were all just talking about, there's always a designed way to achieve more parking on the site. What I'm saying is this, that would kill every single special permit. If, if for some reason, the board felt in your wisdom, that I come in for a special permit, and that, that has plenty of parking, saying, you want another 10 spaces. I could achieve the other 10 spaces, the way we're talking about, either taking out uses, or putting in stackers, or valets, but I don't, I'd rather not. And if I could show you that the space, that the cars that are coming could be accommodated with, I agree with the board, show me that the space on the street, I mean, I don't want to cause a disruption to the character of the community by having traffic jams in the street, but I think if I could show you that this, on this major roadway, which is a major roadway, I think is the technical term, on this major roadway, that there's ample off-street parking available, that the shopping center across the street, by the way, which we haven't mentioned, has off-street parking by board approval behind us, the 400,000-square-foot shopping center at Planet Fitness, that almost nobody, and we're going to give you that data back, that almost nobody uses, that's by board approval, it's right next door. So what we're trying to show you is that the character is not being disrupted by what we're doing. That's all, that's what I'm trying to say. And I agree with what Commissioner Vice Chair Shonda says, what the Chair says, that there can be design changes, and I could ask Igor to go back to his office and cut out portions of the building that Andre wants, and say, put parking there, but that's not what we want, and when we're asking for something under the special permit, that we don't have to show you, or we shouldn't have to show you, that it can't be accommodated on site. It's the kind of thing where it's like, it's a special permit, it's like your driver's license, you don't have to explain to anybody why you want to drive a car, you're just entitled to get in your car and turn it on, if you pass the test. So it's the same kind of thinking that I'm coming to it with, which, if it makes sense. I see, I'm not convincing you. I'm trying. I see, I see, I'm not. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to discuss it, and we'll come back and write.
Just to look at the total floor area that is permitted on this, on the site, and what you're proposing, you're not even maxing out on the floor area, so, you know, you could provide still parking on the...
We're pretty close to the floor area, aren't we? 2.4 is permitted in the district, right?
2.4.
Yeah.
You're close, but you haven't maxed out on, on that, so if you maxed it out, and you're within the limits, and then after that...
But it costs money to build, to build, it costs money, so we don't want to build, listen, I'm not, I'm not debating, I see your perspective, that you'd like to see the parking. What I'm suggesting is that I, let us come back, you said it great, let us come back in writing, maybe we can, can show you something that might convince you otherwise.
So I just want to add two things. First, section 7304, which are the findings that you go through every single time you submit an application, says the following, conditions and safeguards, the BSA may prescribe such conditions and safeguards to the grant of special permit uses, as it may deem necessary in the specific case, in order to minimize the adverse effects of such special permit upon other properties and the community at large, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why we look at the impact of demand on the street system, and why, when the, when the studies indicate there's a demand of X number of cars, we say, meet the demand on site, and we'll waive the rest. And it's the other reason why we do not agree to, when the parking study indicates that we can waive 50% of the amount of parking, we do not agree that you then go to the, to DOT and waive the other 50%, because the entire study is based on the idea that the minimum of 50% of the parking is provided on site. So no matter how you look at it, we are not allowing you to go forward to reduce this to zero. I don't know what the 50% ends up being, but it's not going to be reduced to zero. I don't know what the 50% ends up being, but it's not going to be reduced to zero.
So there's no way, like in the case at 25815BZ, where they went to zero and then took the waiver, you're saying that at this point in the hearing on day one, there's no...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really, I'm not really okay with talking about what are no-gos for the board as to what can or cannot be shown on your plans, we're getting so far afield of what it is that we started with this hearing on. We have no number for what the demand is.
I'll give, we'll get you the number.
We're trying to get to zero, so to me, it sounds like your submission's going to look like whatever it has to look like to get to zero.
No, that's not true.
And that's in the interest of your.
That's alleging, that's alleging that I'm going to miss you, no, that's, I take huge, no, that's not fair. No, I started, I started.
You have to stop interrupting, we're not here.
I didn't say that you would do, I'm saying, it sounds to me like a submission that would be, would be aimed towards a solution that shows that the only viable option is zero. I'm sorry if I made, if that sounded like I was suggesting that you were, you were doing something untoward.
It did.
I'm saying what it sounds like to me, when you're saying your goal is to have zero parking, so you can have the biggest buildings.
I started our conversation at the opening of the testimony, my opening testimony was that the numbers that are presented are using a formula that I don't think is proper. And Commissioner Shavat said, let's give it back. I'm not going, nothing is going to be tailored or created to meet our arguments.
I appreciate it.
I think that the facts, what I was trying to suggest, is that the facts that have not been presented to you, I think will bear out what I presented.
So why don't we, instead of talking about hypothetically, what is or is not tenacious for an application at this point in the first hearing, we should get numbers as to what is the demand for this site.
I'll give you that, I'm happy to.
And we start with that, and if we can also go back to, because yesterday we talked about how you did provide the generation, the trip generation for the other two sites, but the chair noted that those sites are more closely located to public transportation. So I'd actually like to have more discussion about how, using the existing sites, that data can be tailored to, such that this site that's further from transportation, that can be reflected in the trip generation as well.
Yes, we can, and to that point, of course, you're right next to the Linden houses, which is a tremendously large population, and there's tremendous amounts of bus routes, and as our client Andre just testified to a minute ago, part of the problem, the reason there's a demand in East New York is that people cannot get on mass transit into Manhattan to see the specialists that are in New York City that service this type of ailment, so that's, that's why.
There's also the correction of there being three sites, so if we get some information about the other sites.
We'll give you, there are three other sites, so we'll give you that.
And I don't know if this was said, but I know the question was asked, I'm not sure if it was answered, about the length of the lease term.
Right, yes.
Yeah, no, I didn't answer that yet, because I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I will find out from them what that is. They have not entered into a lease yet, I don't think, or actually, I shouldn't say that, have you entered into a lease yet? Have you created a lease yet? Okay, they're just discussing the term, so would the board like to see lease submitted?
We'd like, I think there's a relevance, I think it's material, how long this, if this is the operation that's going to be leasing, and the studies are done pursuant to this type of operation, I think it's relevant how long an operation is going to be.
We'll get a few, it's always a chicken and an egg, because they don't have the space yet, so, but we'll get you the lease, that's easy.
So what you're representing is that all the patients are going to come from the housing project?
No, that's not what I'm representing.
All right, so then.
Not at all.
I only see, I see three bus routes, arguably, so, and so you're relying on this to compare it to the Fordham Road, which is one of the most heavily traveled areas in the Bronx, right? Commercial strips in the.
Do you want to speak?
How are we comparing that to Fordham Road?
Andrew Valeri, we did actually look into this, the site that we studied, or at least got surveys from how people got to the site, was at 625 East Fordham Road. We did an analysis to compare the two sites, because you're right, it's a good point about, are they applicable to each other? Both, this site at 109 Wortman and 625 East Fordham Road, within a quarter mile, there are both 14 bus stops at both sites, and no access to subway within a quarter mile.
Bus stops?
Bus stops.
That's not the same thing as a bus route.
That's correct.
Right, so it's the same bus, so it's taking me from the same neighborhood, no matter where it stops, right? So I don't understand why the number of bus stops on the same bus route are relevant.
It depends on which way you're going, but the bus route is valid, is valid.
The bus route?
Mm-hmm.
But not the number of bus stops?
That's correct, I was looking at bus stops. I could look, figure out how many bus routes there are, just from looking at the numbers, I would say it's probably going to be similar.
What do you mean? You gave me, there's a map right here, there are three bus routes, according to your map.
Yeah, I have a printout of it, if you would like to reference it.
Right, no, I'm looking at it, it's three bus routes, so 14 represents as if there were 14 bus routes, there are three.
I said 14 bus stops.
Okay, so, let's, to be clear, three bus routes, how is that the same and as frequently served and as convenient as just to throw out Fordham Road? Where, right, and what is Fordham Road, the major select bus service serve? It serves the Long Island Railroad system, it serves all the trains, every train there is stops on Fordham Road, right? So how is that, so it's a very convenient location? Explain to us how this is a very convenient location, you don't have to do it now, but you do need to do it.
Understood, understood.
And why it's comparable.
There's also Linden Boulevard.
Yes, the other, the other site that we studied was the existing site that's about a half-mile away at 2084 Linden Boulevard. Again, it's going to be in East New York, so it's going to have a similar connectivity to transit. I can definitely come back with more information about how the site in Fordham Road is applicable. I don't have the information readily available, but I would assume that it's going to be comparable, but I totally understand where the comments coming from.
So the other site is .4 miles away from the nearest three trains, so that's a different relationship than this one, which is almost a mile.
Which, which other site are you talking about? Six, Fordham Road?
The Linden Boulevard site.
Yeah.
According to me looking it up, right? So that's a lot closer to the subway than this is, right? So if this were as well-served as the Fordham Road location by express bus systems and select bus systems, it would be different. But I don't get the impression it is, I get the impression this is a local bus routing system, and as we all know, if we've been on the bus, they often take a really long time to get to where you're going, especially, you know, you just said there were 14 stops, you stop at every one of those 14 stops, it takes you a long time, right?
I've got to come back with more information, and that could be part of it.
Okay. But I think just to, because your client is here, just to reset expectations, the answer is, parking will still be required at the site, okay? We just don't know how many spaces. Okay, understood? Because we're limited on this special permit to 50% of what the zoning allows, so that you have already just learned that's 14 spaces, that's where you're going, right? So you need to adjust the drawings to reflect the 50%.
The note doesn't want to be repeated, but there are, there happened other applications of both under your tenure and before you, where it's been reduced to 14, and then the actual, the resolution I passed up specifically says, the board takes no opinion on the applicant going to Department of Buildings to seek the waiver, and you actually cite the waiver language in that resolution. So I'm not suggesting that you're wrong in your opinion for not wanting to do it here, although I do disagree with you, you're entitled to your opinion. I do believe that, I know there have been instances where the board has brought it to zero upon a demonstration of low demand numbers, which, again, I don't necessarily concur with that being the rationale, but if it is, there has been an instance, and that's what we're modeling this after, that's why we came here with this application, after having read and experienced that other application. But, so we'll give you the numbers to show you the best we can, and I appreciate your commentary on it.
And if you could cite the cases, that'd be, that'd be, not, you said there's cases, I assume more than one case.
As a matter of fact, I could.
No, no, don't cite them now, please.
Pass them up to the board right now.
There's no need to pass them up now, you can submit them with.
You're sure we have four of them that we could pass up, where it's been done before?
We don't have, submitting them at the hearing doesn't give us the time to review them.
All right.
You have so much other stuff to do.
Want to set a schedule?
Yeah.
Speakers.
Are there any speakers on this?
No.
Sorry about that.
By the way, this was supported at the community board.
Yes.
And there was actual talk about parking in the neighborhood, and a lot of talk about it.
Great. How much time will your team?
Oh, we probably need a lot of time, because you have a little bit of work to do, so if we could submit sometime at the end of May, at the beginning of June?
Yeah.
If that would please you.
That would be fine, end of May, June. We could do, there's a hearing on June 11th, has a submission date of May 22nd.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Item number 5, 2018-194BZ, 2317MUK, also known as 1086 East 24th Street Brooklyn. Do affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board and to respond honestly to the relevant questions. Thank you. Excuse me.
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman, from the office of Lyra Altman. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. With respect to the note, we'll be more than happy to add that to the plans. The other two comments were regarding the floor area and the frontage of this building. I'd like to point out that, as you are aware, there are many other BSA approvals in this area.
Sorry, there are what?
Many other BSA approvals in this area.
I know, I'm a little, I'm a little hoarse, sorry.
Oh, okay.
There are many other BSA approvals in the area. If you were to look at the rear yard study that was submitted to your board, you will see there's a house two over, actually, three over, on the other corner. This is 2317, there's an application approved on, I believe it was November 20th of this year, for 2303. Similar-sized lot, as a matter of fact, identical-sized lot. That application was approved with a floor area of 5,904, and this is at 6,020. Now, the difference is, on that site, they actually took their deductions. On this specific site, for whatever reason, I spoke with the architect yesterday, he did not take any of the deductions that are available to him. So I do have a chart showing the deductions that he did not take. You know, that's just a choice that the architects make, as you know. Most of them take it so they could take advantage, because he was at 1.0, which is typically your board's number, he didn't feel that it was necessary to take the deductions. I'll just bring this forward so you can see it. These black spaces, this is an AC mechanical closet in the attic, this right here is a duct, and this right here is the open space in the center of the stairs.
That's from what? What are you showing us? This drawing is from which project?
This drawing is from this project.
This project, so it's mechanical deductions taken on this project?
These are the deductions that weren't taken.
Oh, were not taken, okay.
He did not take any deductions, but they are available to him. That's what I'm showing you, showing on another job wouldn't mean anything, so. This is the mechanical closet that's in the attic, if you want, this is the duct that's on the first floor, and this is the open space in the stairs. None of that was taken. Because he's at the 1.0, which is typically what your board is willing to consider.
Right, when we're not looking at the total floor area.
Understood, but that's, just so you understand why he didn't take his deductions, he didn't think it was necessary, but that brings him in line with the building there. In addition, there is a house that is, remember, we were looking at the rear yard study, do you still have that in front of you? Let me know when you have it, because I want to reference it so that you're seeing what I'm telling you.
Rear yard.
So you see the site, so I could bring up my copy if you'd like.
Yeah, I have it, I don't see the rear yards.
You don't?
You sure rear yard have open space?
Apologize, floor area study, I misspoke, I apologize. We're always talking about the floor area studies, I guess, I mean, the rear yard studies, I guess that was just a.
Yeah, so we're talking about FAR.
FAR study, I apologize.
Yeah.
When you, when you look, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 houses to the north of this house.
And north is up?
Yes.
Okay.
You see a 1.04 on Lot 70. That house is approved at 5,850.34. So just taking a very quick look at some of the recent approvals, you've got 5,850.34 on that site.
When was that approved?
That was approved a while ago, that's Lot 70, I could tell you. I'll say about, it's an '06 calendar number, so probably in '07, give or take.
Oh, it actually says, no?
I have the calendar number on here.
Yeah.
But the year of the approval is usually a bad year after.
70.
The date of the approval, the date of the calendar number. The other one, 5,904, I believe it was November 20th, I know it was 2018, it was my approval. If I'm off, I'm off by a couple of weeks.
So, all right, so I understand what you're saying, but I still think we need a floor area study because.
I'm happy to provide it.
And whether it's completely in line or out along the.
We'll be happy to provide it, we just wanted for the record to kind of go over the numbers. We also looked at the width of the building, because that was another comment from yesterday. Interestingly enough, again, I'm comparing to 2303, because that is a very similar situation, it's on a corner, it's on the same block, it was a recent approval, it seems like it's the most comparable.
2303.
When you look at that.
Where is that?
Right here. This is the site, this is 2303.
The one on the corner. Okay, and 23rd Street.
It is Lot 8.
Okay.
Do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. When you look at it, the width of that building, on the short dimension of that, ranges from 40 to 44.6, depending on where you are in the building.
And you know that because you pulled the drawings?
Yeah, well, I did the application on November 20th of 2018, it wasn't that hard to find them.